Good evening, welcome to the Town of Rutland Office of the Select Board meeting, a regular meeting for Monday, September 9th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Hereby call this meeting to order and open it, and we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be advised that as per usual, this meeting is being recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television, that these meetings are also available on YouTube, and we run live. And we're going to go straight into our Treasury Warrant Number 6 and Payroll.
Will move to approve Treasury Warrant Number 6 and Payroll?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous, and one set of minutes from June 24th.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes for June 24th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. All right, we're going to move right along. The next thing on our agenda, under Article Number 5, petitions, applications, et cetera, we do have a dog hearing in front of us. Please take out all of the information you have. It's under the open session portion of your folders.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Do you want to take the one-day liquor license first to get it out of the way? Or is that...
Um, I don't see him here.
Yep.
Oh my God, he is here. Hi.
Like that idea.
Sure. Does anybody mind? Okay. We have a one-day liquor license. Schultz Farm, come on down.
Podium?
Podium. Please, name and address.
Name and address, Richard Schultz Farm.
Free Maple Ave, Rutland. How are you?
Welcome. How are you?
Welcome. Thank you.
Um, I remember the last time you were here. Could you just tell us a little bit about the event and why you're applying for the license?
We're having a pig roast slash chicken barbecue and other things, and we are going to accompany that with Waschusett Brewery, hopefully, and have an all-day event up there. The first of many, hopefully.
Is it in furtherance of your business or a fundraiser?
No, no, it's part of our business, sorry.
Great.
Okay, so the date of this is for September 14th.
It is.
At the location that you listed, 163 Maple.
Yep.
And Mike, everything is in order?
Yep.
Yes? Does anyone have any questions?
I beg your pardon?
Does anybody from the board have any questions?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
What's the start time for the event? What's the start time for the event?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock?
Yep.
Motion to approve the line and malt liquor license as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, and that's to be drunk on premises at Schultz Farm on September 14th, 2019. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Congratulations. We're going to sign this. It's going to go back to the office for copies. You can pick it up anytime after tomorrow.
Okay, good, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you to our dog hearing people. Again, if the board could take out all of their documentation for the hearing. Just going to read this for the record. Uh, the complainant is Ms. Maureen O'Brien. Board is receipt of your written report and request for a hearing regarding an incident that occurred on April 27th, 2019. Uh, Board of Select will hereby hold a public hearing on Monday, September 9th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Uh, we'll hereby open this hearing. It is now 6:04 PM, and we will start the hearing, please, with the report of our Animal Control Officer.
All right, good evening, everybody. Please prepare.
Wherever you're comfortable. Or wherever the board wants you.
One or the other.
Name, title, et cetera.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Ford. I'm the Rutland Regional Animal Control Officer. I cover Rutland and three additional towns. Um, I've been doing that for about a year and a half now, full-time, part-time about six months previous. And I guess just to start, I can give you a recap of what happened for the incident. Um, on April 27th of 2019, I was off-duty at the time. I received a phone call from Rutland Police Dispatch regarding a dog bite at 228 Maple Avenue, which is the home of the Crosby's. Uh, the bite occurred when the post person, post person, um, was attempting to deliver a package there. Um, I, when I, by the time I arrived, I wasn't coming from, obviously work, I was coming from New Braintree. By the time I arrived, um, things had settled down quite a bit. The victim was en route to urgent care. Sergeant Herzig from Rutland Police was still on the scene, and she had taken the report, the initial report, so she then filled me in. The dog was contained at that point in time. Um, Sergeant, I spoke to Sergeant Herzig, who informed me that the general, and I'm sure the victim can give you a better idea of what really transpired as she was there, but the overall that I got from Sergeant Herzig, and then again speaking to the victim and the dog owner as well, was that, um, she was attempting to deliver a package for her employment for the postal service. Um, Mr. Crosby was going to receive the package and opened the gate slightly to try to help take the package from her. Dog got through and bit Ms. O'Brien several times. Um, again, by the time I arrived, she was on her way to urgent care. The dog was safely contained in the house. Um, the Crosby's were home. I got the report from Sergeant Herzig, followed up, speaking to her, and then I spoke to Mr. Crosby, who was there at the time, pretty much heard the same from him, spoke later to Ms. O'Brien, um, got essentially the same story for her, but again, she can tell it in her own words, I'm sure. Um, I informed the Crosby's that the dog would be quarantined to the property for a period of 10 days, which is state protocol. At the end of the 10 days, I would be back. I'd want to view the dog, make sure he was healthy. I reviewed his vaccination information while I was there. He was current on vaccination and license status. Um, again, quarantining the dog at the property, which is protocol, for a period of 10 days. At the end of the 10 days, I went back, viewed the dog, made sure he was healthy. Throughout the time from the quarantine, um, up until now, for the past couple of months, I've been in contact with the Crosby's and with Ms. O'Brien both. Um, I have put together a list of, I guess, a list of specifications for the Crosby's that they have been in compliance with to put provisions in place to keep the dog contained, to keep this from reoccurring. Um, the, the things that I have put into place for the Crosby's were things that I pulled off of that mass.gov paperwork that you'll have before you with the list under if a dog happened to be deemed dangerous. I, I pull the, the things off of that, that I expected them to do, or asked them to do, requested them to do. Um, they were very compliant with that. I have followed up and inspected the premises to make sure the things that I requested them to do, and I have a list of the things that I have requested, if you'd like it, um, and they've put those all into place. Um, I've gone over those things with Ms. O'Brien as well. Um, I think she was comfortable with those things. Um, however, I'm not, obviously, the hearing authority in town, so I cannot officially deem a dog dangerous, or a nuisance, or any other thing. So, anything that I put in writing is specifically things that I suggest, or that I would like to see in place to keep things, you know, so that this doesn't occur again. Um, like I said, everybody's been compliant, um, as far as what I've asked them to do. So, I have, you know, typically, if I was going to, you know, request a hearing, it would be for a non-compliant dog owner, but they've complied with everything that I have requested as of, as to date.
Question through the chair. Um, so, is the, is the hearing because there was a bite? Is it required to have a hearing?
No, sir.
And how do we get to a hearing process here?
Uh, the complainant requested a hearing.
Requesting a hearing, okay.
Got it. Um, Jen, do we have anywhere available to us, maybe later, a written copy of your, we have your report of the incident, of the post report indicating what the Crosby's were required to do, as well as any recommendation you might have as far as the options in front of us?
This is what I put into place for the Crosby's. I wrote it up in recommendation form for you because the dog, you know, this is clearly, you're in charge of deeming the dog dangerous or not, so these are what I, it's a recommendation form here. But these are the things that I put into place for the Crosby's that they have complied with. So I'll give you a little copy of those.
And did the Crosby's receive this in writing?
Um, yes, she does have a copy of it in writing, yes. Not that particular copy. Okay, I discussed it, and she has a copy in writing. This was not a notarized copy. I mean, they didn't have one notarized, and they were more than willing to do so, that I would draw it up a little bit more officially and have it notarized, but at that point, we were going to proceed with the hearing, so it would be one or the other.
Questions through the chair?
Yep.
Are there any other previous incidents with this, uh, with this dog?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
How old is the dog?
He'll, he was seven at the time of the incident. I think he's closer to eight now.
And he had a license, and he had his rabies?
Correct.
It's a E.
Yes, it's a E.
It's a E.
It's a neutered male, Great Dane, lab mix, I believe, black.
So, just to clarify, can we get what the dog is required, the owners are required to do right now?
What?
What requirements did you place on the...
Yep, okay. Sorry, glasses. Uh, at this time, they needed to, let's see, the dog has to be, um, humanely restrained when on the property. It cannot be chained, so he has to be in a fenced-in area. They have a very large fenced enclosure on the side of their house, um, that was professionally installed, so the fencing does go down approximately two feet, and the posts are cemented in. Um, it's not just a standalone free, free kennel. Um, they, he can't be tied. Typically, if a dog is aggressive in any way, we don't let them to be tied to a tree or any other inanimate object of the building. They had to have a catchment inside their house. Um, we like a double catchment at the door, so the dog doesn't have just one door to get through before. They already essentially had that, whereas their front porch is, um, the railings on both sides, and then completely gated in the front, and on the stairways on the ends. So they essentially already had a double catchment, but I would like to, I wanted to see an additional one in the house, so I asked them to do another one. Those typically consist of, and that's what they did, was a baby gate type system, where you have to get through the baby gate to get to your front door, to open your front door, and then they have to get to the porch. Um, the dog has to, and the kennels are fully enclosed, we've gone through that one. Um, if the dog is removed from the premise, um, the dog can be on a leash that has a tensile strength of 300 pounds, and is no longer than six feet. Sometimes the state will recommend three feet, but I feel that six feet is reasonable. It's an average-size leash. Um, there is a provision in mass.gov that a dog potentially have to be muzzled when leaving the property, but they've never had any issues with this dog off the property, and I felt that as long as the dog was contained on a six-foot leash, it was going to be adequate protection, um, for anything. Um, you know, that essentially means, you know, don't put your dog on a flexi leash and let it run 30 feet from you if you potentially could have a problem. Um, they have to provide identification to me for the do, you know, to me about the dog, meaning updated licenses and stuff like that. The dog can't be re-homed without, you know, my knowledge of where it's going to go, and we can let an additional city or town know that it's going to be residing there. Um, I think that was the gist of it. There are other things in the mass.gov. One of them is that if a dog is deemed dangerous, we can recommend that they attempt to get an insurance policy of $100,000 in addition to their homeowner's to cover the dog. Um, how that works is they really just have to prove that they have attempted to, because truthfully, no insurance company will give them out, so they have to prove that they have tried to get that, what the Crosby's have done, they've attempted to. Um, they unfortunately cannot get an insurance company to cover the dog, so that provision has kind of been met. One of the other provisions in the mass.gov is that a dog has to be neutered. Again, he's already been neutered, he's been neutered, I think, for the whole time they've had him, so that's already been met as well. They also have on their porch, um, an additional gating system. So, there, those gates are locked. I've asked them to lock them. They put a carabiner as well as a padlock, and then there's an additional gate that goes down the stairs into the dog pen, so there's, again, another form of catchment from the gate to the porch. The dog goes from the dog pen, through a gate, to the porch, through a gate, so there's not just, can't just be loose running out that way.
How high is all the fencing?
Six feet.
No top?
No top. The porch railings are lower than that, but again, um, I didn't feel the necess, the necessity for a top. They do have a top of a part of it for shelter and shade and things like that, but in all the time they've owned them, I've never been aware of, had a complaint of the dogs going over or under or around any fencing. This was truthfully an issue where the gate was open. He didn't go over the gate to get anybody. The gate was opened.
And you've inspected this house?
Yes.
These things are in place now?
Yes.
And that kennel enclosure was already there, or was placed...
Correct. Nope, it was already there.
It was already there?
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody, we'll probably bring Jen back. Does anybody have any questions for her?
Couple.
Yep.
Um, have you met this dog?
Yes.
How many times?
Hmm, twice.
And what were the circumstances where you met?
Um, to release him from, the, the day of the incident, and then to release him from his quarantine.
Any aggressiveness, any signs of aggressiveness against you?
He's protective of the home.
Right, okay. Is it possible that, um, that this was like a startling incident, when the, when the gate was open? Or is it, do you think that the dog is going to bite anybody that's within the confines?
I mean, I guess I, I don't know the dog well enough to answer that, and I wasn't there for the incident. Um, I don't think he was startled by the gate. I do think it was more of a territorial protective action. That said, I also have been informed that the Crosby's have many people over their house, not, you know, I mean, have had company at their house, and haven't had any other incidences that I'm aware of.
Children?
They do have children.
Yeah.
I mean, but again, I wasn't, I wasn't there that day, and don't certainly know the dog well enough.
If I, are there signs posted of beware of dog signs or anything currently?
They're not as, no, 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 not, no. Unless they've done that recently, but that's something that they would have to answer, but they weren't when I was there.
Okay, that's...
What is your feeling if, uh, a neighbor's child were to go over there and play?
I feel if the dog is properly contained, they're not, I mean, there's, with the setup they have now, there's no reason that that dog has to come in contact. Now, would they, do they have to be diligent about that? Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, again, I don't know, I'm sure that children have children over to play. I don't know how the dog reacts with them. I mean, he may not be protective with children, because it's a whole different body language and vibe, and everything that a child gives off versus an adult, but without really doing a full behavioral eval on the dog, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
So, I mean, through the chair, so that, they've had the dog for, I would presume, you said the dog's seven or eight years old?
Yes.
And we've had zero children deaths in that, that seven, eight years based on the dog? It just, it sounds to me like...
To the best of my knowledge, yeah.
Right. It sounds to me like the incident kind of looks like it was just an unfortunate kind of accident. Is that your impression of what happened?
Um, I think that it was, well, certainly unfortunate, um, and certainly an accident. I, I think that given the opportunity, the dog would potentially protect his home if he felt that there was a threat, as he maybe did this time.
Sure.
But with the proper provisions as far as being confined adequately, with the double catchments and not being able to just bolt out, and, um, and the dog didn't bolt out, the gate was unfortunately opened, thinking that, you know, Mr. Crosby was going to help out and take the package kind of thing. So, you know, hindsight's 20-20, and I don't imagine he'll be doing that again.
Right.
I know that they don't even mind if they never get postal packages delivered there again. I mean, they're willing to forego their, you know, postal service. Um, as long as the dog is confined, I mean, can I tell you it's never going to happen again? No, but can I tell you that with the proper provisions, it's unlikely? As long as they're very diligent, yes.
Right.
Okay. Don't go anywhere.
Like, is it my seat?
Go back to your seat.
You go back to your seat, yeah.
Don't leave the room. Um, if we could get Ms. Maureen O'Brien to come up?
Um, with your permission, I have some color pictures that show the injuries.
You can, you can start telling them.
So, all right, it's there, I'm sure.
So, um, name and address. No, go right there, you're fine. Name and address, and just if you could explain the incident and what you're looking for from this hearing.
Sure. Uh, so, Maureen O'Brien, 19 Summer Hill Drive, Rutland. Uh, I'm rural carrier two. I've been there for a long time. I never had a problem with the Crosby's up until this incident. Um, always very pleasant, very kind. Um, so that day, it was the, um, townwide yard sale day, so I can remember it pretty well. Pretty much a carrier nightmare, but anyways, so I went to the house, I had a package about this big. I had it in the back of the truck, so I had to go to the back of the truck. I parked at the top of their driveway, got the package out of the back, and as I approached, they have an enclosed front porch, and there was two dogs. Usually, there's only one dog, and the other dog is, I've never had a problem with. The other dog has never been out, except for this one day. And as I approached, I can see the bigger dog going back and forth, back and forth, and Mr. Crosby came out, and as I always did, I gave him a "hey, how you doing?" He came out, and as I came closer, and like they say, it's a gated front porch, and I saw him go to the gate, and as I saw him go towards the gate, I started to say, "You don't have to." I could have easily handed it to him over the gate, but I couldn't even get it out quick enough. Soon as he opened the gate, the gate, the dog snuck behind him, and I was viciously attacked. I mean, this was months ago. My arm is still, you can see that. You can see marks here. The dog is huge. I still have a bruise on the back of my arm, which is still a lump. I have a scar on my hip, which is still there. I'm not going to show the other one, but you can see from the pictures, the first bite was my right breast. That's probably the worst of it all. It's a big line that goes over my breast with a tooth mark. This dog, it wasn't just a bite, it was an attack, a vicious attack. This dog clamped onto me, not once, but multiple times. The first one was here, the second one was on this arm, and after that, I can't even tell you what happened, because it was such a awful incident. Uh, to this day, I can't, you know, I'm a dog lover, and even in my own house, with my own dog, I am a different person, because I don't want to see this dog hurt anybody else. That's why I'm here. That's the only reason I'm here. If this dog hurts another person, you know, and I hadn't done everything I'm supposed to do, then I would feel bad, and that's why I'm here. Uh, she mentioned not muzzling the dog. I think a muzzle is, ev, every possible restraint to this dog needs to be put on this dog, if it's to be kept. You know, that's not up to me to say. You know, you're the board. I'm perfectly fine with what you all decide, but basically, that's why I'm here. I don't want to see anyone else get hurt. That day of the incident was a cold rainy day. I had a padded bra, I had a tee-shirt, I had a heavy sweatshirt, I had a fleece-lined rain jacket, and these are the injuries I got, wearing all that clothing. The, I know he didn't mean to open the ga, I know it wasn't on purpose, but this dog is a vicious dog that I was assaulted by. It was a mauling. I mean, people are getting killed by dogs. This is the biggest dog there is. It's a Great Dane. It's an enormous dog. You can tell by the marks on my teeth, on the, here, this was one big bite. And that's basically why I'm here. Uh-huh. Sorry, forgetting, it's, it's a horrible incident that I don't...
Um, we can come back to you if you want to take a minute?
No, I'm fine. Nope, might as well.
So you heard a little bit of the ACO's list of current requirements for the dog. I think I also heard you say you wish there were other things in place. Have you been made aware of what the board's options are tonight? One of which would be to dismiss your complaint and not deem the dog anything, which is technically currently what it is now. It's been given some restrictions by the Animal Control Officer. The second level would be nuisance, and the third level would be dangerous.
Nuisance, that, that would be a joke, if you claim it a nuisance. I'm sorry. Dog's more than a nuisance. A nuisance is a dog that, your neighborhood dog that barks. This was a vicious attack. I don't see how that's even, you know, and that's, you know, that kind of upset me when she said that, that without her filing, or without me going before the board, that that, that the dog can be just a nuisance. And I feel that's wrong for the town. This isn't a nuisance dog. This is a...
Okay, so we wanted to clarify that. I think there were some questions.
Right.
We don't get a lot of dog hearings, and I just wanted to ensure that that process was followed. Typically, we will rely on the Animal Control Officer, on that person placing restrictions on an animal, so this, this definitely is the next level. Um, sounds like you understand that very clearly, so, um, I'll have you add to that later. We're going to go through the process. Does anybody have questions for the complainant?
I have a quick question. Um, was the dog, did the dog have to be physically pulled off you, or did it stop on command?
Like I said, the, the first couple bites, I remember, and then, I don't even know how we got the dog off me.
All right.
I don't even know. That's, it's just, it was that scary.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not a small person, someone smaller than me, someone not bundled, like I was bundled. If, if I wasn't bundled that day, I mean, I can't imagine I would have been a fleshy mess.
So, there's about four different bites, would you say? Shoulder, chest, arm, left side, right?
Yeah, depending on, I mean...
So, you know, had to grab, detach, grab, four times? How, what period of time are we, are we talking that this is going on?
It's, it's quick. It's very quick.
Four hits.
Very quick, but latched on, like, I felt like I was being ripped.
And the homeowner was...
I'm sure he was just as scared as I was, but, uh, you know, I'm lucky I didn't fall down. I'm lucky I didn't get my face, but I mean, still, these wounds aren't, you know...
Other than the flesh wounds, uh, is there any nerve damage? Is there any, uh, anything to the bone, structure, internal?
Um, like I said, this one here, I mean, it's still bruised, and there's, it's like there's a, still something, like a lump, you know? I don't, I range a motion fine.
Sorry that this happened to you.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. O'Brien, did you get the bite report from the hospital?
Uh, I don't think they even gave me, you know...
Okay.
I think that's probably from our, I believe.
Okay. I don't think we need that right now, because that would be...
Is there a picture of the dog?
No, I don't think so.
Does anybody have any more questions for Ms. O'Brien? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, on the, um, the other party, we actually have two different listings. Um, under the order of quarantine, we do have the two owners' names. So Sheila and Brendan Crosby. You can both come up at the same time if you'd like, or one person can come up and be the spokesperson. Um, name and address?
Uh, Brendan Crosby, 228 Maple Avenue.
And Sheila Crosby, 228 Maple Ave. Thank you. So if you could, um, explain to us what happened. Uh, you've heard what's being requested, and if you could respond a little bit to that.
I'd also add, if I can start by saying, I can't express how, how sorry I am this all went down. Clearly, I never should have opened the gate. That's out of the way. Um, it's not far off from Ms. O'Brien's tail. I saw her coming with a large Amazon package. Um, you know, the dogs had given their, oh, somebody's here bark on the porch, which they typically do. Um, I came outside to, to lend a hand. I was simply, she's carrying the box. I would be, you know, what kind of guy would I be if I hadn't attempted to give her a hand? Uh, what had happened was, my gate is here on the front porch. And I lifted the latch, and I swung the gate open, positioning myself between us, the, the dogs. And the other dog is a ten-year-old lab, black lab. They typically are out on the porch together. Um, again, it's all gated off. There is no access to anything, except for my porch. All these provisions that we're talking about, I keep sidetracking. But they were put in place long before. We live on Maple Ave. And with babies in the house and puppies at the time, I just put the gates in because you go up near that street, and it's bad news. We live on the downside of the hill. So I put everything in, in, in place before, long before anything was ever even considered an issue. That being said, had I thought that they would be an issue, I certainly would have never opened the gate. I've never had an issue like this before. So, long story short, I had opened the gate, and I positioned myself. He had moved his head past me, and I nudged my knee into, we have the hard post. So the wooden post here, wooden post here, and an iron gate in the front. Uh, and as I reached out for the packages, when he dodged past me, I was off balance trying to assist her with the box. And he jumped up, paws on her forearms, which is where you can see the marks. And then, yes, he nuzzled his head into her chest. This probably went down in a fraction of a second. Doesn't take me long to get down four stairs, grab the dog, and get him back on the porch. I, I helped him very gently up onto the porch very quickly. Uh, I was not in a good mood. I was shocked that it happened, and I grabbed him and threw him on the porch. He needed to end whatever happened. She wasn't knocked down. I apologized until I was blue in the face. I didn't know what to do. I'd offered to call 911. I said, do you want to come in? How do you want to handle this? Um, I simply had no idea what to do. I was taken back by it, as well as, as she was. Again, I, had I expected anything even remotely close? We've had packages delivered, left and right, Amazon boxes, UPS guy, FedEx guy, what have you. And never once would I have been worried about either of them. They can't get out. They're not going to get out. They don't jump over. The porch is, you know, it's eight feet if you glue the railing. You know, he's not going to jump down that far. You know, I just, I, I simply shouldn't open the gate. I shouldn't, I, I couldn't watch her walk up the walkway with a large box and not say, hey, you know, let me give you a hand. How are you? We had Calm and Pleasantries. We've had that in the past. Uh, I just, you know, I just wish I had not been...
Can you give us a clear visual? I've heard a lot of descriptions of the property and where things are.
Yep.
Could you, could, for someone who's driving in, can you walk us through that?
Yeah, so the top of our road, uh, we have the house, uh, it's the farmer's porch heading down towards Paxton. It's set back probably a hundred and fifty feet or so from the road. Uh, guardrails on both. So the entrance is the only, the only entrance is the top of the driveway. Uh, and it's a hill on both sides. So the mail truck had parked at the top of this road, uh, top of the driveway, rather, stayed on the street, which is typical. I think sometimes they come in and turn around. Everyone's welcome to do whatever they want to do. Um, this time, she'd stopped in the road and walked down the driveway into the walkway. The front walk's probably about fifteen, fifteen, twenty feet. Um, and in that time, I would have already been outside, because I knew she was coming in from the road. And that's when I walked outside. Uh, but we have a big farmer's porch all the way around to the right. So if you're looking at the home, this is a fifty by one hundred fenced-in area that, uh, Ms. Ford had told you about. And then, the front door has a gate on it. And the side door way out back has a gate on it as well. So I've, I've fenced in everything before.
Sorry, do that again?
There was a question. What was it?
The, the, you just jumped to the fenced-in area, has a gate on the front and the side?
The fenced-in area has one gate, which is on the porch. That's how you get down. There's a staircase that goes down.
It's attached to the porch?
Yes, ma'am.
From the front of the porch?
Uh, from the side, from the top on the side. So if you're looking at the house, there's a whole front porch.
I took pictures on the phone if you want to see.
The only opening is, is right in the center where the front door is. There's no other openings in the front of the house.
So she went to the front door of the porch, which is enclosed?
By the gate, yep. I have a big iron gate that goes in the front.
But the porch itself, is it actually enclosed with screens, or is it an open porch?
Oh, the top part is not. It's an open farmer's porch with a railing. Yep.
With a gate in the front?
Mm-hmm.
And a gate to the side, going out to a fenced-in area?
Uh, yes, and that's, the fenced-in area is on the front of the house.
Do the dogs have access to the fenced-in area from the porch?
When I open the gates, yep.
But not always?
Not always.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, where were we?
And then, well, okay, and then it's the door to your actual house, which would be a general locked door?
Yep. Yeah, front door, storm door. Uh, walk onto the porch is about four feet, then there's the iron gate that slides open.
Okay.
Swings opens on a caster. It's drilled in all, along the side.
Okay.
And I, like, um, I'm not sure what the term was that Ms. Ford used. But whatever the clips are, they're slipped over, so the gate's locked. You can't open the gate.
How, how tall is that gate?
Uh, four feet. Typical, uh, it's to, you know, same with the porch. Aesthetically pleasing. It, it wasn't any higher or any lower.
And it's a baby gate?
No, it's an iron fence. It's a metal steel fence that I, I picked up at Home Depot. I cut them down to size. I welded on the bottom casters and the hinges on the side and mounted it. Uh, there's lag bolts that hold it into the front porch.
Okay.
So to just get in the house, you have to open and close three gates. So a gate, a door, and a door, and then the baby gate on the inside. So essentially, you'd call it four catchments almost.
See, now you lost me again. So, got the big fancy gate at the front of the open farmer's porch.
Go up the steps.
Yep.
The whole farmer's porch, and then the gate right across is number one. That's the one that's locked with the...
Now you're, now you're on the porch?
Open that, and you're on the porch.
Okay.
Go four feet, there's our front storm door.
Storm door.
Open that, there's another door.
Okay.
Open that, and then we can, we have the baby gate.
Baby gate in front.
Can we get a blueprint of your house?
Could we?
I'm a terrible drawer, so it'll take a while.
Can I just go through the chair?
Yep.
Um, where is your mailbox situated?
Across the road, on the neighbor's property. Not on our property at all. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, is the dog neutered?
Yes, ma'am.
And did we say, were there any signs? Do you have signs out there that you have a...
There are no beware of dog signs, no. No, no, no trespassing signs, no, nothing along those lines. No soliciting signs, anything like that.
Anything now?
Nope.
No.
And you've owned him?
Since he was a puppy, seven years.
Yeah, I've got him when he was three months.
Yeah.
Did anybody have any more questions for the Crosby's? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. O'Brien, did you have anything to add? You can stay there. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It nuzzled my chest. It's a little weak. I was bit, viciously bit, attacked. It's not nuzzling my chest. It wasn't his paws. These are tooth marks. It was bites. This dog was latched onto me. We're not talking about paws. We're talking about... And I think he's giving you a wrong impression of what happened. Dog did nuzzle my chest, you know?
Go ahead. Do you have anything?
Nope.
No. Um, would the ACO like to add anything? I know you had a comment earlier on that.
Yeah, it was just, when I did meet with Ms. O'Brien last time, we did go over the pa- I brought her two copies of the paperwork that I have provided to you guys with the mass.gov provisions. And we did go over that I'm not a hearing authority in town, that you are. So anything that I put into place, I cannot deem. Um, and I never said I would deem the dog nuisance, or list the dog as a nuisance. I don't have the power to do that either. I, but anything that I would put in place would simply be a document stating that, you know, in lieu of public safety, these are the provisions that we've put in place to keep this dog contained. So, and I gave her two copies, one that was not marked, and one where I highlighted the things that we had put into place for the Crosby's, just so she did have that information beforehand. It made her well aware that she wasn't certainly entitled to a hearing if she chose to request one. Um, because I, and I think that was where she was more comfortable. And I don't mean to speak for Maureen, but that, you know, I think it was the comfortability of having the dog officially deemed something where I'm not capable of doing that. I can put those provisions in place, but I can't deem it anything.
No point of information for the board to. The bite report is listed in your packets for this evening.
Okay.
Through the chair, the dog is a Great Dane? I thought I saw something on here it was a mix?
It's a Great Dane-lab mix.
A Great Dane-lab mix?
Yes.
Okay.
It was one of them told.
What is the...
He is large.
In your opinion, it's my understanding that Great Danes do not live that long on average. What, what would you say the average lifespan?
Of an average Great Dane, ten or ten, give or take, depending on the dog? I mean, again, hard to say. I owned an English Mastiff that lived to twelve, and they're not supposed to do that either. So, you know, I can't tell you when the dog's going to die.
Right.
The average lifespan would be about ten, probably, for a Great Dane or a dog that size.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, um, so, Ms. Ford, can you clarify what, if any, your recommendation is in this particular matter? What would you recommend to the board?
Um, I, the, what I would recommend, I mean, as far as whether we deem the dog, um, I don't think...
And safeguards.
Okay, I do agree that the dog has a very protective tendency. So, I, I think that I would recommend deeming the dog dangerous versus a nuisance. Um, and the safeguards are the ones that I have printed out for you. Um, my recommendation is there, if that was the case. Um, and they are, what they have put into place now. Um, I know Ms. O'Brien mentioned that she would be more comfortable if the dog was muzzled off the property. Um, I don't think the Crosby's are opposed to that either. So, everything that I put into place there, and then certainly anything else that you see fit.
The dangerous designation, though, carries with it different implications than the nuisance designation, does it not? In terms of potential ramifications if the dog were to have another issue, or were to get off the leash? I mean, what, what is the difference in terms of, like, is there a difference in terms of legal liability? Is there a difference in terms of notifying your insurance carrier?
Well, the insurance carrier's been notified, and no longer will cover the dog anyways. So, a- any legal ramifications, they take the risk of that. Whether we deem the dog dangerous or not, if there's another incident, you know, they're taking the risk of that being a problem for them legally or liability-wise. Um, a nuisance, I mean, you can read, if you read the definitions and through there, they're, they're very different as far as what, what's considered a nuisance and what's considered a dangerous dog. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes.
Um, can we ask the Crosby's, what's the typical week in the life of this dog? Is it typically off the property? Is it typically always at home?
Always at home.
And there haven't been any incidents involving this dog prior?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Nothing that's been reported, no.
Can I, are we, are we having a, do we all have discussion?
Yeah, so what we can do now is close the official hearing, and then have the discussion and make a recommendation. So if nobody has any more questions from the three different parties that are here?
Does anybody else have anything to say?
One more question. You said there was a, a report from, from the hospital?
Yeah, I actually...
I mean, I have a bite report.
Yeah, no, we found it.
And that's just something that I get for any dog bite sent from the doctor's office, urgent care, emergency ward, wherever they send. So that I'm aware of, or in the mail. That's very standard protocol.
All right. I'm going to hereby close this hearing. Um, so, the recommendations in front of you are essentially seven items. That is, the, it starts on page, uh, one to, looks like the third page. Um, starting with subsection C, and then you're going down one, two, three, through seven. Uh, just for the record, the restrictions would be, that the dog be humanely restrained. That does not include being chained, tethered, or otherwise tied. That the dog be confined to the premises. Uh, we can set the restrictions on what that enclosure looks like. Uh, that when removed from the premises, the dog shall be humanely muzzled, uh, with a specific tethering device. Um, that the, number four, uh, that's the insurance claim that Jen referenced, a hundred thousand dollar insurance for claims resulting from intentional or unintentional acts of the dog. Number five, owner or keeper provides the licensing authority, which is the town of Rutland, also the ACO, uh, information by, on, by which the dog may be identified, um, including photography, video, tattoo, microchip, et cetera. And, uh, number six, that the dog be, uh, altered if it has not been already. We've heard that it is altered. Uh, and number seven, that the dog be humanely euthanized. The board may choose from a selection of those options. Uh, I think what we heard was that, uh, the ACO, uh, went ahead and, um, asked the dog owners to activate several of those things. We can make those stricter. Um, the first would be, uh, the motion or the discussion on whether or not the dog should be named nuisance or dangerous or nothing.
Should we go into the definitions of nuisance versus dangerous, just so the public's aware?
Sure. Were you doing that? Am I doing that?
I, I can read it.
Go for it.
All right. Okay, relevant definitions, national law, forty, one, two, six, eight. So an attack is defined as an aggressive physical contact initiated by an animal. A dangerous dog is defined as a dog that either, without ju- one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death. Or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. A nuisance dog is a dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity. Or two, by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all of the circumstances. Let me, I think that's, just want to read the definitions.
I, I think it's, we're good.
We at the discussion?
We are at the discussion point of this, yeah, situation.
Um, and then, just for full disclosure, I do casually know Sheila. She's a dispatcher. And she also sang the National Anthem for us at the Moses How. So, just full disclosure, um, I don't think that you would be for making a competent decision on this.
And full disclosure, I know Maureen, just, our kids go to school together. So I've seen her around town in school things. Again, I don't think that that is preventing me from hearing the facts and making a reasonable recommendation, decision.
Thank you. Um, further discussion? So, uh, based on what, you know, the definition that we just read, obviously, on nu- uh, the definition of a nuisance dog, that last line, "But such threat or attack was not grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances." I think that, that alone says that this probably doesn't fit this category of a nuisance, nuisance dog. You know, this, this was clearly an attack. Um, it wasn't a disproportionate reaction under the circumstances. It wasn't a nip, like you might get with some, you know, litter carrier type, uh, incident, or opening the door. You get nip, this, this, I mean, this was an attack, and we, you know, photos speak volumes on, on what it was. Now, the question is, I, I don't think it fits the definition of a nuisance dog. Um, so I, I, I think our conversation is going to dwell upon the definition of the dangerous dog, whether we, we give it, give the dog that classification in there. My personal belief is that I think it's within that classification. And, uh, this was a situation that was unfortunate, as everybody agrees. Um, and partly human error for, uh, through, through the gate in there.
I think it's, it's tough, through the chair, because I think, you know, as a postal worker, you're in a unique circumstance where you essentially have an easement onto somebody's personal property. And there were over six thousand dog attacks on postal workers in California last year, just in one year alone. So I think it's indicative of a, kind of a problem that folks in your situation have, and some of the things you encounter. Um, it's also tough, because I know that, uh, being protective of the home is something that I think a lot of folks would consider is a good quality in, in animal, and why a lot of folks have dogs. I know Sheila, you have two German Shepherds.
Shiloh.
Shiloh Shepherds. I'm sorry?
Shiloh Shepherd. Doesn't matter.
Know the difference, but, um, I have a shih-tzu, so I totally, not a player in the same ball field here.
Miniature poodle. But yeah, we are the opposite of dangerous dogs, however. But they are nipable, and that's the difference, that's the difference that I want to...
It is. And I think, you know, it's, it's tough too, because, you know, you could make the reasonable conclusion that if someone, if an unknown person were coming over to a property, the dog would be willing to protect its property through this kind of measure. Um, you know, I, I have assumed that, uh, the folks that own the dog have had folks over before, and that there haven't been issues with the dog. Um, I would certainly anticipate that if my shih-tzu thought someone were breaking into my home, that she would do something about it, although I suspect she'd just sit on the couch. But I just, you know, I think if we're labeling it as a dangerous dog because of the breed or the size, um, I think the nuisance dog were, you, you know, you do, there is the, the definition of having attacked a person. Um, I, I am of the personal belief that it fits, given the circumstance, more under that category, knowing and recognizing that the postal employee is in an entirely different situation than most civilian people. I wouldn't be walking up unsolicited to, to their home. Um, I think in my mind, the easiest recourse, or something that we can do to correct the problem, is would you be willing to, you know, not accept packages at your house anymore, and just notify the service that you can pick them up at the postal office? Because your mailbox being across the street, that doesn't necessarily pose a danger.
It's already been put in place, period.
It's some signage.
And all carriers have been instructed not to.
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm Kathy Mooney. I'm the postmaster, and I did the investigation for the accident.
Oh, okay. Maybe we should hear from... Maybe we should hear from, if there was an investigation.
Investigation by the post office?
By me as the postmaster, yes, it's an accident, it has to be, I have to go out and find out what happened.
And that's part of like a normal procedure?
Absolutely.
That's your internal investigation?
Yeah.
Is there a report?
Well, it's not necessarily privy to us, it's her internal investigation for the federal post office. She's not required to provide, I guess is the point.
I can give you, it's, it's not that it's not for public record, it's just not generally obvious. But it's just basically what happened, and the EMTs arrived and wanted to take her to the hospital, and she did not want to go to the hospital, so I took her to urgent care instead.
I'd like to hear from the postmaster. I have, I know we closed the hearing, but I have a couple of questions on the magnitude of this attack versus other type of dog bites that you had seen historically through your career as a postmaster.
I've only had one other person have a dog bite while I've been a postmaster, and that's been over 17 years.
We also, I think too, we need to be mindful, we can't, the classification can't be made based on the breed of the dog, which I want to be sure we're careful about, you know, because, and I understand it's intimidating, it's a Great Dane mix, I mean, that's an enormous animal. It's almost like horse, but I want to make sure that we're just clear on, it's just based on the incident.
The $100,000, I know that wasn't, Jen, in your sheet here, the $100,000 insurance binder that?
According to the state, what they have to do is prove that they've attempted to get that, and the Cowspeas have, and have been denied. And once they've been denied, that becomes pretty much a null and void option for us. You know, insurance being a privilege, not a right, insurance companies have the ability to say, "No, I'm not going to carry you for that." And more often than not, when that is a provision that we try to put in place, they are denied by any insurance carrier. So, they can't find a carrier that will even cover their dog at all. So, that dog is essentially uninsured, so if something else happened on their property, there would be no fallback, you know, there'd be no help for them in that regard. So, they have proven to me that their carriers would not, would not issue that policy, which makes that option very difficult to enforce.
And I, I think through the chair, to provide some context to that, there are certain breeds of dog and that homeowner's insurance, if they found out you had, would not provide you homeowner's insurance anyhow. So, in most cases, it's my experience, my wife sells insurance, but that people don't even inform home insurance companies that they have a dog, whether it's a miniature poodle or, you know, a German shepherd, just for that reason. And you would not believe some of the dogs on that list, like Chihuahuas one, and you would think that that wouldn't make the list that homeowner's insurance companies get worried about, but.
I kind of guess a Chihuahua thing.
I guess, in my mind, we've heard from the animal control officers' kind of recommendation that it, the dog be considered a dangerous dog with the provisions put in place. I would like to see a kind of beware of dog signage or something to alert people who maybe aren't coming onto the property. You know, we have a lot of solicitors, wrong, right, or indifferent, that come down our driveway, and we have big dogs that bark, that just to warn anybody that's not familiar that there is a dog on the property. And so, I think if we've heard from kind of, in my mind, a professional, the animal control officer's recommendation, that the dog be deemed as dangerous with the provisions in place that the animal control officer has recommended, I personally would also like to see the signage piece added in. I know Maureen would like to see the muzzle piece, I'm open for discussion or conversation about that, but I think taking kind of the expert opinion is a big weight for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think when we're looking at the excluded determining factors, this is the only part where there's a little bit of subjectivity, and the question is, did the dog perceive there to be a threat? Maybe. Was the response of the dog disproportionate to the threat? Multiple bites, significant bites, not just a quick little bite of the hand, typically somebody holding something would be, you'd see the bite on the hand, this dog went kind of full body. And then, at the time of the attacker threat, that the person involved had breached the enclosure, and of course, we know she had not. In fact, the enclosure was breached by the dog. So, sitting here as the deciding authority for the naming, it does put us in a difficult position, because if we don't follow the strictures of the, of the definitions to that point, if something else were to happen, which I know you're going to do everything in your power to not, but if they did happen after a hearing was brought to us and we took a very mild line relative to that subjectivity, it, it's a tough position to be in for everyone here. I will say, it's sounding to me, I'm going to preface, sounding to me like number seven, euthanasia is not on the table. It is very, I have never been on a board that recommended euthanasia. I think one of your colleagues has had to do it in the past year, maybe, within Worcester County, it's rare.
I have to do it in Worcester County. It's really rare.
It's very rare. And I think what I would want to move forward with, and Mitch sort of referenced this, your, the animal is getting older. Should the restrictions be put on, I would want, you don't know, you could still sort of, hopefully live through them. We have had other dogs here in town with pretty significant restrictions put on, and in most cases, those worked out well for the, the family involved and for the protection of the public. And that is a preface.
Through the chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just want to understand what, what the purpose is in labeling the dog a nuisance versus dangerous in this case. I mean, I understand that you would like perhaps to have the dog named as dangerous versus a nuisance, which you had indicated in the hearing, and I'm, I'm curious as to, if the protective actions are going to be put in place and we're going to put restrictive actions in place on the dog owners, what in your mind would be the, the difference in definition?
Like I said, when I came onto the property and I saw him, we've always had a good, hey, how you doing, which is what I said. I said, hey, how you doing? He came back at me the same way. I wasn't threatening anybody, I was carrying a package.
Understood. I think it's, it's tough.
It was a vicious attack.
Right. I think the dog could, doesn't understand the concept of Amazon, and could probably perceive you reaching in to hand a package as something different than it was. And it was on personal property, and that's my biggest thing, is I just, I don't want to have to mandate to folks what they do and do not have to do in their personal property. And again, there are a lot of dog owners in town that have larger breed animals that are protective of the home, and I think homes that have dogs are much, much less likely to be broken into, and they have them for that purpose. So, for me, it's a kind of a personal property. I understand, again, working for the post office, you have kind of an easement onto that property, but, you know, the phrase, "I walked onto his property," to me, is kind of a little bit, you know, telling. And I understand the attack was vicious.
So, if someone gets mauled, something like this happens again, you're going to be fine calling it a nuisance.
It won't, because if they can't get mail delivered out of their property, then I don't understand how, how.
Packages will no longer be brought to the.
Right, but the mailbox is across the street from the house.
It's always been across the street.
Okay?
Always.
And there have never been an attack before, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the dog is usually not out either, which leads me to believe they know this dog is a danger.
Well, if I could throw my two cents in, I personally don't think there's any question that it's, that it's a dangerous dog. Given the details of the attack, it was quite vicious. I understand that, that dogs are protective of property, but if anybody comes on the property, the possibility of it happening again is there. So, so again, I do believe it's, it's not a nuisance dog, it's a dangerous dog. And I think a couple of the things that were recommended, for example, the signage. And I don't know if it says in there, but I was reading in here, if the dog is ever off the porch, if it's handled by an adult only, I don't know how old your children are.
They will walk them, don't walk them, so.
But, part of the recommendation, from my recommendation, would be, it's only handled by the owners, and again, signage for the property. And then, the other, the other aspects that are in place seem to be appropriate.
Through the chair, can I ask a question for the ACO? So, if we, if this board decides to label the dog as dangerous, or does not, if the dog were to be attacked, and once again, is the town liable for inaction on the board's part?
You know, I'll honestly, if you answer that, I don't, I don't know the answer, I'd have, I'd have to find that out, I don't know where the liability lies.
Because even if we've labeled the dog as dangerous, and it bites somebody again, and euthanasia was on the table as an option, is that something that we could also be facing liability for? It's just, I don't know the legal around any of what we're doing, really.
These, these are all very gray. Certainly, legal action has come into play, and in point of fact, if we were to vote tonight for hypothetically dangerous dog and institute any number of restrictions up to euthanasia, which actually, trying to think, no, it was not recommended the last time. We did once have a resident who went for remedy to a higher court, and so, I think it could go both ways. The residents can certainly contest the decisions that were made here by the local board, or a civil case, or a combination of a civil criminal case could be brought by anyone current or future, depending on our decision. But it, but it's, it's very gray.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I guess from me, it's not just, it's not only for the postmaster, the postal delivery people, people delivering packages, you know, postal service, USPS may not be delivering packages, what about UPS or FedEx? But there's also different religious organizations that use home-to-home solicitations and other things that may not be aware, so it's not, in my mind, it's trying to make it, make it known to anyone that may step, step foot on that property, again, unsolicited or not, that there's a dog there that could, that is a large dog, or could, not even necessarily that it's a large dog, but a beware of dog, a dangerous dog. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from, that it's not only to protect the USPS and FedEx and UPS and other package deliverer people, it's people who are doing other door-to-door solicitations, whether it's, they've checked in with dispatch and are cleared, or are exempt from that.
Lastly, that dog, you know, the dog is a weapon. That dog, that particular dog is a weapon, and with that, the owner has responsibilities on how that, that weapon is, is controlled. I think we've all ruled out that this is not a euthanasia situation before the board. We have two things that's before us, whether to deem a dangerous or a nuisance, we can have a vote, up or down vote, and then, I agree with the recommendations of the animal control officer. I, I guess I'm indifferent about the $100,000 insurance binder, I'm not sure that's the board's business to recommend insurance, but I do agree that signage should be aware for everyone to, to know, police, fire, EMS, anybody that may be on their property that, you know, just a beware of dog, so that's where I'm at.
I don't know if this helps as far as clarification goes, and probably the best document that we should be looking at right now is actually page five of the one that's noted as Town of Rutland, nuisance and dangerous dogs. That actually breaks out the options we have in front of us, down to, what, 15 separate things. It's a list we've used before.
There you go.
So, I think if we were to go with nuisance, public nuisance, our, our availability of discretion would be listed under numbers one, two, and three. Now, number three, order another specific remedy deemed appropriate, clearly gives us some flexibility, but I don't know that it gives us the wherewithal to be able to go through anything under the 15 listed for dangerous dog under MGL 140, section 157. I think relative to that, I, you know, what we're hearing from the ACO is she's already tried to implement some of the dangerous dog level restrictions.
Correct.
Without them, yeah.
I mean, to me, truthfully, it was, it's semantics. I mean, I did, I personally, and this is just my personal thing, don't need the label of, as long as the provisions are met. It's a public safety issue for me versus a, a labeling issue for me. So, knowing that those things have been put in place are being observed, you know, that was, I guess, a peace of mind for me, knowing that this dog is appropriately contained.
And I just want to say, I mean, the homeowners are here and have seemed to be very amenable to working with animal control and postal service somewhat, at the very least, to say no more packages and everything, so I think that that goes a long way also. It's, seems like we have responsible dog owners also.
Normally, I would bring a hearing for, if I had more compliance.
Yes. So, thank you.
Sheila? So, looking under the Mass General Law, this is chapter 140, 157. If the board were to deem this dog a dangerous dog, we shall order one or more of the following remedies. Perhaps we need to go off of these bulleted remedies under chapter 140, although it's very similar in the animal control officer's recommendation here, but if, if the wording of the MGL is that we shall, maybe we should, we should go right down, right down here, exclude a couple that, that aren't relevant, and then.
So, we'll have two separate things in front of us. One is the motion for the dog itself, nothing nuisance or dangerous. And then, we can then, to your point, go down the menu option list, you're correct, we will have to choose at least one, like a menu option.
The MGL.
Yeah, just as a clarification for the members of the board, what the ACO has in her recommendations is a copy and paste of the actual wording of the Mass General Law. The bulleted list here is an interpretation of the general law, is what's been defined as best practices for enforcing those.
Thank you. If everyone's ready, I think at this point, I would entertain a motion, and please note, within your motion, you need to indicate what you are referencing. You do not list, need to list the facts, but you can list the reference to the reports as attached, and then, relevant to the definitions, to choose either one or two in the definition, or three when it comes to nuisance.
And there are draft motions on page four of the packet that you received from our office.
I'll make a motion.
Can I read it? Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to move, based upon the following facts presented at this public hearing, included but not limited to the report filed by the Rutland Animal Control Officer and the testimony given this evening, that the Board of Selectmen find the dog complained of is a dangerous dog by reason of the attack of April 2019 upon a United States letter carrier. Period.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion?
Do we need to add into that the dangerous, under relevant definitions on page two of the Town of Rutland, there's two reasons for a dangerous dog. First, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person who believes, would believe possesses an unjustifiable, unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal.
The first one.
So, you'd like to add in the first definition?
Do we need to? I mean, it's already included in the motion.
We need to, we need to reference one or more reasons listed in the definitions. So, one or both, we can choose both, it's probably both.
One, oh, one or two?
Or both.
I would say the first one, small i, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death.
All right, so that's amended slightly, do you still second?
I'll second that amendment, yes.
Friendly amendment. Okay, any conversation, any discussion on that?
Uh, just that the second part goes into a reasonable person, and then justification or unjustified imminent threat.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's, you know, it's a physical injury that took place here. I think, I think it's, you know, it's a physical injury that took place here.
I think in some cases, number, letter double i is used in a situation where the dog has not yet attacked.
I think that fits the, the situation here.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. So now, we're going to go through this list. We can do one by one, or someone could make a motion for a selection of them. I think we've talked about one being a sort of low-level, easy and useful. That would be the sign. The current outside containment on the owner's property is not technically in compliance with what's listed in the MGL, because it's not fully enclosed with a roof. Which we have, absolutely, this board has required in the past. I'm not saying we have to here, but it has been required in the past.
Could we perhaps utilize the wording of the animal control officer, which is, I believe, relates to number two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper, provided that the confined means securely confined indoors or confined outdoors on a securely enclosed and locked pander dog run area upon the premises. So, substitute paragraph two in the recommendations by Animal Control Officer Ford for dangerous dog, MGL 140, section 157, numeric two.
Would this require any physical changes to the owner's property?
In some cases, it has required thousands of dollars' worth of work. These chain link enclosures are incredibly expensive. It is, it is cost prohibitive.
It's, I mean, the dog's eight years old, this never happened before. I just, I would hate to have, to have a homeowner have to pay thousands of dollars that were dictating. I'm for the sign, dangerous dog.
I think they've already met number two.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at. My understanding is that we're in compliance already. So instead of saying they have to build a roof for, for the dog, it's already met the satisfaction of the ACO.
I mean, I feel so. It's never, the dog has never gone over any of the structures of the home, including the railings on the porch. In eight years, it's never attempted to, and as far as going under the fence, again, never attempted it, but the fence is, I know a lot of dog pens are portable, where people just, you know, slap them on the round, bolt them together. This is not the situation. It was professionally installed. So, the posts are, you know, cemented in. So, the dog's not going under either. So, to, to me, it was a very secure and sufficient enclosure.
Can we then, I mean, I know that we're ruling out euthanasia. Can we also potentially, as a board, rule out severe alterations to the homeowner's property if the ACO is satisfied with what's currently existing?
It, it sounds to me like in this case, we can. We've certainly had cases in the past with escape hardest dogs that an eight-foot chain link fence would have been nothing.
Right, correct.
That's, I don't think that's the case here, based on everything we're hearing. The dog's never escaped.
No, I mean, I, I personally, my personal opinion, find the enclosure more than satisfactory for the dogs.
Right.
So, that would mean that the dog be contained on the owner's property in the current structure as it stands?
Yeah.
With the catchment area, which I believe you'd already indicated there.
Yeah, and we did the one extra layer as far as, even though they, usually it's a double catchment, so technically their door and their porch would count as that, but we went with the third as far as having the inside baby gate as well. So, essentially, the dog has to get through three, four, if you count both doors, the storm and the, you know, regular door, but technically four, but...
That's a lot of...
A lot of opening.
It's a lot of gates.
Points of failure, stolen.
Yeah, yeah.
Four gates.
I think number three, the padlock, is there on the outside, correct?
That's right.
Already, so we can include three. Two, we've amended. Four, confined to the premises. Sounds like that dog is pretty consistently, so we can keep to that. Number five, that the dog must never be unrestrained in the town boundaries. I think we should talk about the muzzle. If dog is being removed from the property to get in the car, to go to the vet, there are cage muzzles that are humane, that are not restrictive to a dog's breathing. Certainly, Kenai Cooney uses it as well as a, as a working tool.
Well, he's trained to attack people.
He is trained to attack people.
Yeah.
So...
I guess my question about the muzzle is, I assume that there's a slight learning curve for the dog owner to be able to manipulate that on to the dog also, so...
Just a buckle.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are several types. I mean, as pointed out by the chair, I mean, there are several types. There are basket muzzles, and then there are, you know, a, a closed, more cloth muzzle that is a little more restrictive, and, you know, there are different types. And some are easier than others, and, you know.
Are you recommending a muzzle, in this case?
Truthfully, it was not in my recommendation. The dog is never, again, to the best of my knowledge, exhibited any type of protective behavior off of the property, and truthfully, rarely ventures off of the property. I did discuss it, discuss it briefly with the Crosby's, and I don't think they're opposed. If it, if it came to that, I'd be happy to provide them one, while we have several, but it wasn't something that was, I felt necessary in my recommendations, no.
Okay. Oh, look, I mean, we've never had an incident before. I don't miss, I mean, this is an incident that occurred on private property. I don't think this...
It's not in the ACO's recommendation, so...
Okay. Yeah, and I think it was a little bit of a perfect storm of events. You know, the dog is clearly protective of the house. The homeowner also unfortunately made the mistake of giving the dog access. So I think it's kind of a learning point, unfortunately, for everyone, but, yeah, it's not, no.
I'm assuming you take the dog to the vet once in a while? You don't have a problem with the dog when he's at the vet?
You go to Dr. Chapman once a year for the...
I don't, I don't personally see the need for, for a muzzle.
Just as a clarification, you'll see on the list that we're looking at, number six and seven are the hybrid that the ACO has put together, where that was the 300-pound tensile strength for the leash, and then went with the recommendation of number seven for the six feet. So that's where the two get combined there.
Okay. I'd like to make, yeah, I would follow that amendment and amend those two for the ACO's recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So basically, seven with the tensile strength.
Paragraph three of the ACO for number seven.
Is there anyone on the board that needed the dog to be placed in a secure facility?
No.
No.
Humanely restrained is included within the contained on the owner's property?
I mean, if he's already in an enclosure, does he need to be? There you go.
It's not tight, not tight, right.
I think we can cross off ten, correct? That's muzzle even on the property.
Yeah.
The insurance isn't in that file.
And they attempted the insurance, I think, is my understanding, and are unable to obtain, which is all that we can ask, right, is for the, the attempt to be made.
So we could, should we just cross that off?
Or we can include it, because they've already done it. You know, we want them to make that effort to, I don't know, I mean...
A reasonable attempt, attempt to obtain?
I don't think it's the board's business.
It was on the recommendations of the ACO.
And they've already done it.
I don't see a need for it, I mean, it's...
Yeah, because of my actual recommendations.
Oh, you didn't.
Because, you know, knowing it's already been attempted.
The argument would be that the town is assisting and stepping in to ensure that an affected resident, i.e. a bite victim, would have the adequate medical care that they needed in case of an event. I think probably is where they're headed with that. We're hearing that the attempt was already made and documentation can be provided?
For the homeowners? Uh, yes, ma'am. Actually, our homeowners insurance policy altogether was dropped weeks after the incident, so we had to go through all the motions to get new homeowners insurance, included the policy for a dog.
Okay.
So we've gone through quite a few policies.
Okay. So I think if we ask for proof of that, it will certainly help.
So you're, you're saying keep number eleven?
They've done it, so I think keeping it is allowing us to get confirmation of that, just a recommendation. The identification, I'd, I'd want to recommend, is the dog microchipped already?
No.
No.
Okay, I think I'd want to recommend that, just in case the dog ever got out. Sounds like we have photographs somewhere, just not here tonight for us, right?
Correct.
Of the dog?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we know how much microchipping costs?
I would say you can probably find a clinic for thirty bucks or under.
Yeah.
The vet would probably do it for, I mean, sometimes they get with an, with an appointment fee on top of it, but the microchipping itself, I think, is thirty bucks, maybe, thirty dollars, maybe, yeah, if that...
Thirteen is not relevant. Are we requiring any type of behavior training?
No. I don't think so.
Okay. And fifteen, we've said no. If somebody would like to make a motion that encompasses these restrictions, remedies?
I'll make a motion that the board adopts the following remedies, as provided, MGL, chapter 140, section 157, and by law, section five, numbers one, numbers three, four, five, six with the amended leash length to si, reflect six feet for the ACO's recommendation, seven, nine, and twelve. Also, going back to number four, to amend per the ACO's recommendation regarding the enclosure. I know that's a long motion, but I think that encapsulates what we just talked about.
Yeah, you left off eleven, so can I get a second on that?
Oh, apologies.
No, oh, do you want to add it?
I can, I'd like to amend my motion to include number eleven.
Is everybody okay with that list?
I, should I second with a question, or?
Sure, second and then we'll discuss.
Okay, second, I'll second. I just had a question for, I think we kind of encompassed number two with number four. I didn't hear you say number two in the motion. Number two, I had in my notes that we were going to amend it to reflect the animal control officer's recommendations. But I think that that's kind of encapsulated in number four also. So if the board can just take a quick look at those two and see if...
I thought that's, that's, I had the same impression you did, so...
He didn't, he didn't say two.
Correct.
I just said, the enclosure with the ACO's recommendation.
The second paragraph of the ACO.
I think number two is a very specific type of enclosure.
Okay, that's fine.
You want to stay away from that?
Thank you for that. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more questions? Are you clear on the list? You will get this in writing.
You're pretty much compliant now, based on everything that we've talked about.
I think the only thing is possibly the microchipping is the only outstanding...
The beware of dogs sign.
Yes, and the signage.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Could the board ask that the ACO check in with them, within thirty days, to see that those few outstanding things are cared for, and that the requirements that you had already requested continue to be in place, that the board has now sort of codified? You're going to get all of this in writing from our office. You will receive a copy as well, Ms. O'Brien. Again, just as part of the process, you've probably looked into this, you technically do have remedy if you, either of you questioned the decision of this board tonight, if either party just questioned that decision. All right.
Thank you, all parties, for coming in. I know it's been quite an emotional evening, few months and evenings, so I appreciate everyone coming in.
This is one of the hardest things we do, far none. We do some hard stuff, but man, these are, I, we feel for you, and I'm, we're so glad you're able to be here. That must have been scary.
Can I, uh, I borrowed my daughter's binder.
Oh, yeah, I was going to ask.
We have the same binders.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to let the people involved in the hearing have a chance to escape if need be. You are all set for the evening. Thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to move on to item number six. That's public comment. Is there anyone here for general public comment? If so?
Yes.
You co, all right.
Two meetings ago, four weeks, I mentioned something about Central Tree, Dick Williams over there.
Thank you.
That's just what you said. I know, but...
Never know when we have a new viewer out there, Dick.
Never know. I mentioned about the Central Tree, and, you know, the tree itself not being mowed and all that, and I noticed it was mowed again down here, but not around the tree area. So I just thought I'd bring it up again.
Okay.
And Joe was here, and he's, I, I will talk to him about it.
This is Central Tree with the tree, is it?
I marked the tree.
Central Tree Middle School, not...
Middle School, oh, okay. Yeah, Sheila said to mark it, so I did. I put a tape around it.
Oh, the tree, add CTMS.
The only other, other thing I read at the moment is in your golden objectives. I noticed that charter was on there for the fall town meeting. You were trying to think about doing that. Have you made any progress on doing?
The town charter.
There is no way that a charter would be ready for this fall town meeting.
The, may I...
You haven't even met to do any of that at all.
The, what was put on the goals and objectives sheet was a recommendation received from a board member to place an article on the fall town meeting warrant to fund the hiring of a consultant to help guide a charter commission that would later be formed. The way that the Mass General Law defines how, or outlines how a charter would be put together would probably be a, with a commission route, a two-year process before anything is put together. But where it'd be starting from scratch, the recommendation that, or the, yeah, the recommendation that was received by my office, remember, the board, was to place an article to fund a consultant for the process, to guide the commission once seated later on.
This is going to happen. You know, we're going to, you gotta start getting ready for the town fall meeting, so...
We haven't even opened the warrant yet, but I'm sure it will come up.
I am putting it out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is...
If, if I may, along, I think the bylaw subcommittee, or the bylaw committee is also exploring a, creating a bylaw to solidify the town administrator position, as well as hash out the town administrator roles, as well as the BOS roles. So that, I think, is also potential for the fall town meeting, as a bylaw, on the bylaw side of things.
Peter might run out here any second and say, it's not going to be ready.
I know. I'm like waiting for Peter to like come and like throw stuff at me.
There, yeah.
Public hurriance and...
No, no, no.
Yeah, the bylaw, the ad hoc bylaw committee will be meeting tomorrow during the regularly scheduled time to discuss the town administrator and select board bylaws that would be proposed with the codification whenever they choose to present it to the town. Did I get it?
Quick clarification?
All right.
Quick, quick clarification?
Really quick, yes. I've got it basically right. We're starting on tomorrow on the TA and BOS.
Name and address.
Sorry, your brain needs to...
Thank you. Thank you.
The, the bylaw committee is beginning work on those two bylaws together tomorrow at one forty, no, twelve forty-five, sorry.
At this point, is there any expectation that bylaws of any way, shape, or form would be ready for a November fall special town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We are through, we are actually, we have to finish Scenic Roads, and after that, we have the first five chapters of seven done.
For codification.
For codification.
Nice.
And up, and modernization of the whole thing there.
Oh my gosh. He's rubbing his hands.
They've been working hard.
I spoke with Anita this morning too, and the goal is to, as they're being reviewed and proposed modifications, to put them up in phases rather than the whole bylaw book at once, that way it's easier to digest.
People to digest it a little better.
Yeah.
That'll be great.
It's, it's, there are, by the way, a lot of changes going on there, because we're modernizing as well as just codifying, because no matter what, we have to modernize them. They'd go through legal review and get the same harsh treatment we gave them anyway.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Pete.
Public comment, yes?
Yeah, public comment, yes.
Okay.
Name and address?
My name is Skip Clark, 1991 road. Curiosity to question on the, on the purchaser acquiring a vehicle for the water department, SUV?
What's the question?
Why?
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 Okay.
And where did it come from?
Would DPW like to answer that? Would you like to defer? He would like... He would like, would you like to answer or come back to us with information? I'm not...
No, no, I'm, I'm familiar with it. Um, through the chair, uh, the SUV used at, um, the water department was a surplus vehicle we got from the police department. It replaces an existing van. The van has been taken out of surplus and it'll be sent off to be recycled shortly. I don't think, I think we paid for paint and we did some engine repairs to it, but we didn't purchase the vehicle.
So it came from the police department?
Yes, sir.
And I do, if I do recall, it's, could be wrong, but those are, any vehicles are supposed to be used to help pay down the cost of a new vehicle? Uh, that's what I was, I'm under the impression of.
So your question is why wasn't the police vehicle sold?
Right.
Traded.
Or traded.
Traded.
It had some significant motor work that had to be done, and I would have to estimate if we didn't do the work in-house, you wouldn't have been able to sell it as is for anything. It was mostly labor work. There was a problem with the flywheel. We did all that work in-house.
Well, I just cannot...
I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does, but it doesn't. I mean, the water department's in disarray and I just, you know, money spent. I don't, I, that's just me, and I don't have town water towns over. So that, that being said, they needed it, they probably did. I don't know.
Did that transfer come through the board?
No, I think we can ask Nick for what the evaluation was, um, when they did the paperwork.
What's the vehicle we're talking about?
Yeah, it's an SUV.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't really have any more of the Crown Vics, but we did.
Is a new cruiser up there, it looked like today?
Yeah, that's in my update. That's, yep, that's the new one we got today.
Saddam?
Yep.
We actually replaced a vehicle that had been taken out of service a year ago.
Okay.
So it's not an increase.
Okay, no, no, I just, I didn't know, I didn't know there was taken out of, I thought that...
Oh, no, it's been parked.
I thought the truck was the, was to replace the van, the black truck that we bought.
No, we, I mean, if you look at, we, we wrote a, um, we sent it on to capital improvement planning. Um, there's a five-year plan and there were two vehicles listed on that document, and I believe they've already approved it.
Well, the CI PC doesn't approve.
No, but...
Recommend.
They recommend it to the board.
Well, my point is, though, what DPW said, what department needed is not new information. Been out for some time.
Hold on, we'll let Dick finish. I mean, we'll let Skip finish. He has, he has a list like you.
No, I just got a couple.
Oh.
That's all. The other, the other question, and I've been asked by several people in town, that if the select board would start the, uh, paperwork to authorize, or put on the town warrant to authorize recall of a elected official?
So that's generally a petition that begins, but it's legislative process.
Wait a minute, Jill, wait a minute, wait a minute. You people can put it on the, on the town ballot, on the warrant.
True.
Now, if you don't want to, that people would like to know.
Um, I don't have any historical perspective on a board putting a recall of all elected officials that would include itself proactively on, but...
We have nothing in town for anybody to do a recall of any, any elected official.
Correct.
We have nothing.
Through the chair, most communities have this. It, it's not, let's just get straight to the public understands. It's not if people don't like an elected official. It's only used in the instance of if, um, the elected official commits an egregious criminal act or is found doing something unseemly with public funds, things like that, that are then, they go through the process and then after they go through the legal process, the public then has the ability to petition for recall of that official.
Yeah, the bar is pretty high. I think the biggest thing is gonna be, it's going to take legislative approval because it's a home rule petition.
But the town first has to go to town meeting to say they want this.
So I guess what we need to do then is add it to the list, um, of potential articles for Fall Town Meeting. Uh, I think the concern, as you know better than many people, would be that if the board voted to not place it, the deadline would have already passed
So this is...
For, do you see what I mean? And you know this very well.
Yes.
So for anyone out there, you know, disregarding just recall alone, if someone is looking for an article to be placed on a warrant, if they have concerns that a board, the board of selectmen, select board will not place it, the deadline for petitioned articles, which have a requirement of a certain number of, uh, signatures, that number is based on population, uh, it's a little higher for a special town meeting than it is for an annual, and, and that's something that the town clerk would be able to give you that effective number. But that petition with the signatures that meet the requirements is required prior to the board setting the warrant. So if that makes sense, resident petition has to come in well before the board is actually having the meeting where they set the warrant.
But I mean, so the, the board then, to skip the petition, could just vote to put that on the warrant as a board?
If they can. And then at that point, when you go to town meeting, typically the resident petition, petition, um, which would be placed at the end, would require no action. Someone would move no action because action had already been taken from a, an earlier...
Right, but we don't need a resident petition at all if it's something that we want to prioritize and put.
Uh, no, but that's the point. There's no way of knowing that until after the deadline. It's a, it's a bit of a catch-22 that people should always be aware of.
So what, what you're telling me is you most likely won't put it on?
Oh, no, I'm not saying anything. I'm saying this is not...
Either yes you're going to want, no you're not. It's, it's as simple as that, as far as I can see.
It's not a decision that's on the...
Where's Peter?
Agenda tonight.
Well, I know it isn't, but...
And so...
Okay, let's put it on the agenda for next week, next meeting. That either you will or you won't. Cause I need time and the people need time to get, I would imagine, hundred, two, three, four hundred, or whatever needs signatures.
Around a hundred.
I don't know the numbers, I'm sorry. I just don't wanna give an incorrect...
No, it's fine.
It's a special town meeting, it's not a regular.
All right, we can put it on the, I don't see why we wouldn't put it on the agenda.
Well, I'm not sure why we would put it on the agenda outside of the regular process. We haven't even opened the warrant yet for the special town meeting.
Yeah, but you, you need the town time to get the signatures.
They should go ahead and do that. I think if, it, it sounds like this is something that's important and if it's...
It is important to a lot of people in town, yes.
Most communities have it in place as well.
Most communities do not have recall. It's actually a bit unusual.
Most communities do have a provision to recall.
Not out of the three fifty-one. I don't know what the exact numbers are. It's actually relatively rare. Anyway, I, Skip, you, you know, you're well acquainted with the process. I would never want to see a situation where the community members didn't get an article on the warrant. What would, I, I'm not sure what the value is in risking it. Do you see what I'm saying? Why not go out and get the petition ready, get the wording ready, get the signatures? You know, I, you know what I mean?
That's...
We've had multiple resident petitions in the past have that issue where they, and it's not even just Rutland, where they waited for something to happen and for God knows what reason, a board, whether it's here or elsewhere, chose not to place an article and then it was simply not gonna be considered at that meeting and you wait until the next one.
Through the chair, I'm a little confused before you can use Skip. I mean, we can just choose to put it on as a board. We don't need the resident petition portion. You're just talking about it as a backup if we vote it down.
Correct, but we're in no position with a warrant for a town meeting that's not even open yet. We place our articles after review by multiple boards and, and agencies. So CI PC typically has a look at all the articles as they're coming through, FinCom as well. Sometimes these resident petitions, um, have financial implications.
Can we, as a board, then, vote, as a board, if we want to support it, vote to simply support it, letting folks know that this is something we're going to support, putting on the warrant when that period opens?
As a hypothetical?
No, as a reality, I'm asking.
Uh, you know, again, the board can hypothetically choose to do that, but we're not in that position tonight. And as a matter of just process, it, it's exactly the process that I outline that Skip knows well, which is the resident petitions for articles, for whatever reason, are due prior to the board setting its meeting to set all of the articles. We typically set them over one full meeting, or maybe sometimes we go to a second meeting if there's a question.
I think what Skip is saying though is that if we give him an inclination as to whether maybe the board favors it, it would give the public a better understanding as to proceed.
So he would have to do his petition.
So he doesn't have to do his petition, and I don't know that that's a good use. I, I wouldn't...
Fourteen years ago, they did not, the board sat right there, fourteen years ago, when the petition was brought up to establish a, a agricultural commission or agricultural, whatever, community, they sat right there and they said, you do not have to do a petition, we will support you a hundred percent, and they put it on. So, I mean, to say they'd never done it before, they have. Okay, but what you're telling me, get the petition because most likely you, it will not happen.
Through the chair, can we, just a question, can we, can we, might find out how many communities have something on the books to remove all the official conduct or whatever you think best practice is?
Yeah, for recall.
Yep, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Disappointed, but that's all right.
It's government's good.
Um, anyone else here for public comment? You had a follow-up or no?
It's okay.
Hi, name and address.
I'm Janet Edman. I live at nineteen Inwood Road. I was wondering if you were aware that the water pipes in our neighborhood have broken fifteen times in the past seven or eight years, excuse me, and three times on my property twice last weekend. What's gonna happen?
Can we, can we get our, Joe, you ready? Can you give some background on Inwood and that whole neighborhood?
What kind of information would you like?
No, I'm actually looking at the person behind you.
Oh, okay. Well, you must be aware of this then.
Oh, sure.
And Joe, if you need time, I think, to prepare something, I know it's been kind of an issue you guys have been dealing with, if you need something to prepare comprehensively, we could do that.
No, that was pretty straightforward.
Not to throw you under the bus or put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. Um, that was pretty straightforward. Uh, we've known other problems in that area for some time. Public Works had solicited, um, Weston and Sampson engineers to do a design, uh, maybe the design for that area because it was, it was recently surveyed. It's probably seventy-five percent ready to go. Uh, the question at this point is gonna be funding. Um, when we went through the water and sewer rate challenges we faced over the last six months or so, um, we outlined the capital budget, that the funding for those improvements are in that capital budget. We have yet to approve that. Once that's done, we should be able to go forward and replace and supply.
Do you know the timeline for that?
Do, I don't know the timeline, the timeline for when we're gonna start the work.
Yes.
I don't. Um, and frankly, it's because we currently don't have money in place to do it.
Okay, well, my yard flooded twice last weekend. My neighbor's yard flooded. They nearly lost his swimming pool, which they just had replaced.
And gained another.
So it's gonna end up being a huge issue. So our lines are breaking in the neighborhood as well.
No, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, we need roughly half a million to a million dollars to do the work in that area.
How much does it cost to patch it each time?
Honestly, probably, that, they're done by town crews, so probably, if you were to compare it to like a commercial firm, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars a patch. I agree with you.
There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there in fifteen patches.
I agree with you. I, no, I...
So it's a waste of money. It's a waste of water, which we've had a ban on.
Frankly, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
That doesn't help me.
To do the work, we're, the town has to agree to borrow the money and we're not there yet.
Okay.
So...
That's very frustrating.
So at Fall Town Meeting, we need to make some corrections to what happened in May when we were making changes to the way the funding sources work for the two enterprise accounts. That's what Joe's waiting for. I believe, is it correct, Joe, your neighborhood is one of the top things on the list of, of, yeah?
Well, it should be.
Yes, as well as should be. And your comment about the number of breaks is well documented.
And there are, there's a fire hydrant across the street from me, which is on a commission, because they hook it into the water and blows the line. And it's been on a commission for over a year.
So it's a public safety issue?
Yep. The nearest hydrant to my house is on Highland Park Road, and the six-foot stockade fence is on property on Highland Park, so it's not a clear path to that hydrant.
Okay. A larger capital project is one thing. That's something different. Could we just make sure?
No, actually, the hydrant is technically part of the picture of repairs.
But can it, but can it really wait until the repairs happen?
I can look.
Okay.
But my understanding was so many repairs and patches have been done, then it may not be possible to activate the hydrant. The resident's actually correct.
Okay. And that's not...
Does the fire department, do we know, do they have a contingency in the...
They must have some.
Yeah, we have the tank.
They have tankers. So, okay, so it's not...
Because we have large portions of the town that have no fire protection at all, so...
So you're safe in that regard, time being.
Good to know.
But I'm, I'm serious.
But I can't take a shower.
It is, it really is a priority. We just have to straighten out our funding.
That's what I've been hearing from the crew.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? I'm going to move on to Becky, who has waited very patient. Thank you, Becky.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, Becky Tuttle, I'm the treasurer collector, um, and I'm just, just, uh, giving you a departmental update because I haven't been here in a while and just kinda wanted to go over what we've been working on and what, what transpired over FY nineteen and things that we've done in our offices. Um, as you know, we, we switched all our benefits. You guys voted to switch our benefits to, to do a significant budget savings, uh, from Maya to, actually from Fallon to, over to Maya Blue Cross Blue Shield. We successfully did all that. Everybody's benefits migrated over, everybody got new cards, um, effective July one. I haven't heard anything that it, that there are any issues or anything like that, so, um, and they were very helpful getting everybody migrated over. Uh, we had a health benefits fair in May that gave all the opportunities to meet, uh, some of the new Maya representatives. Um, Aflac was there, somebody from the Mass Smart Plan, so they had access to a lot of their, um, people that, that represent the benefits that they, that, that the employees are active with. Um, and part of the Maya switch over, we, the Maya has a wellness team, so we're looking at offering a, like, we have a four-week yoga class that's coming up, um, on Tuesday nights that we're offering to all employees and their spouses, if they're interested. Um, we're gonna be doing a cooking class as well. Um, we did implement a new time clock system for the DPW workers. It's a swipe, uh, system where they were using a punch clock. Um, the swipe system, it's actually, uh, another division of Harper's Payroll Service, which is our, um, the service that, that I use to process payroll. So the, the time actually uploads directly into the software, so there's, there's no more keying it in again. Um, I've been talking also with Karina to, at the recreation department to get her, uh, summer help on the program for next summer because that is one area that there are a lot of, a lot of kids coming and going and, and lots of time, uh, that they use a punch clock right now. So that would save also a lot of time. So we, I wanna help thank Nancy Macaruso, who was very, very beneficial in, in getting that up and running. Um, and we implemented the new sick time incentive policy that, uh, for, effective for July one, and that seems to be, seems to be going well. Um, let's see, I just wanna say that our, um, tax collections, the collection rate for each current year is about ninety-eight percent. So of the fifteen million that we bill out, we, we get to the end of the year and there's about two to, two, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, I think, outstanding right now. So as a percentage, that's only two percent, um, which, and I wouldn't be able to do the things that I do and be that efficient if it wasn't for Lisa Sheeman and Amy Molson, who work in my office and are a great asset to me, and I thank them for all their services. Um, for our tax title, um, as you know, our largest outstanding, uh, person, we have a legal agreement in place with Hanging Hook for the two fifty-nine Main Street, uh, property, and he is going through the process of selling that. Um, there is a agreement in place for a December thirty-first potential closing date, um, for that. So we're, that's, that's in process. Um, we still, we did rec, correct all the recording errors that we had, um, requested money for in one of the special town meetings. Those have all been corrected and re-recorded at the registry of deeds and the liens, the recordings that were incorrect have all been correct, um, re-recorded. Um, so we are at a point where everything, knock on wood, it, that is in tax title is correctly recorded and we can move forward with working on, um, collecting that part of things. We did foreclose on six parcels through the land court this year. Um, they're, they're mostly land and smaller parcels, but we're, um, looking at moving more over there to try and, because we still have a hundred and seventeen parcels in tax title, which is a lot. So we're working on, on collecting those. Uh, my goal for this coming year would be to go, uh, and do a, process a tax lien sale for some of those parcels, which will, an investor will purchase the tax title and we will get the money directly. And then they will, they will do the, the long drawn... And then they will, they will do the, the long, drawn-out process through land court. It's, it's done in many different towns for the tax lien sale. I think that was one of the things that was suggested for me to do when I started because Paxton had done something like that, so. So I'm hopeful we can actually get that, do that this year. Let's see, the, so again, we said I have about 117 parcels still in tax title. The outstanding balance on June 30th was 664,000. Last year it was 718,000. So it's coming down very slowly. But we're hoping to be very aggressive on it this year and collect it. So that's kind of what we've done this year. And if you have any questions for my office, and we're always open for suggestions or comments or questions.
Becky, just as a clarification, if we were to do the tax title sale, that sells the lien on the property, not the actual property itself. It still remains in the ownership of whoever lives there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did I hear you say Massmart?
Smart, Massmart, smart plans. It's a, it's like a 457 plan that the employees can contribute to. And it's, it's like a 401K, but for municipal governments, so.
Is there a matching?
No. Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting around. Mike.
Thank you very much. This was brought up before, but it was the first thing on my list, so we'll say it again. You'll see a new police cruiser on the streets. If you remember when we were doing our budget, this year we budgeted $45,000 for a purchase of a police cruiser. The idea was originally to purchase a full cruiser outright, but then due to the needs of the police department, that it changed to three cruiser leases. This is one of those three. If you remember, at Special Town Meeting, we paid a lease payment out of free cash. That was the first payment on the first car that was received. That way, the 45 that's in there, it begins a rotation that's in there. So one car now has two payments on it. The other two will be starting at one and so on from there. So Nick has a plan there to stagger those. But the sedan cruiser that you see is the only one of the three that'll be a sedan. The rest will be explorers. So that is now out on the streets. So if you see that, that is our new car. Just as an update on the marijuana discussion, as I promised, the group of department heads who will be meeting are working to set up a date. We should have our preliminary recommendations of the board either the last meeting of September or the first meeting of October, as was suggested by town council when they were here. So just to make sure that, again, we have an open process with that. I just wanted to throw that out there for the public. In case anyone sees anything from the Oakham Board of Selectment tonight, I wanted to make the board aware that they asked our fire chief to meet with them this evening, as well as the fire chief from the town of Berry. Oakham is looking for a town to take over their EMS services, as well as potentially regionalize the chief position for a period of eight months, while they have their transition team come up with a plan for how they'd like their department to run. None of that would be able to go into effect until it comes before the board and the board votes to sign an intermunicipal agreement with Oakham for those eight months. But because there's a discussion about it being held on the Oakham Board of Selectmen's meeting that's taking place now, I want to make sure that was at least aware for you guys. The 300th Anniversary Committee is still seeking applicants actively. We have four that we've received so far. But if you remember, the board put in place a minimum of five. And they are on a rolling basis, so even once they start meeting, we can still accept people after that. So if anyone is interested in participating in the 300th Anniversary Celebration Planning Committee, please feel free to contact my office. Chromebooks, I heard from our IT provider, CM Geeks. The reason why there's such a delay is, CM Geeks is a municipal IT service provider. And at the end of the fiscal year, almost all of their clients purchased technology equipment. So the exact wording we got from Paul was, "I'd love to get them out because they're taking up the most room." But he's starting from who ordered first and then, "We should have them by the end of the month." He's estimating. The board's goals and objective sheet was sent out to the town department heads, as was requested. And I have asked for the department heads' suggestions for things that they'd like to add for their own departments, as well as for that, if we were to hit the 10,000 population number, how that affects their department, as was requested. And what's their five- and 10-year goals that they see down the line? So they're supposed to be providing one-year goals, five-year, and 10-year. And it's a work in progress. It's nothing that's finalized yet. I would like to say, and I want to make clear that this is nothing that happened tonight just because we had a town staff member here presenting something before the board tonight. So this was not related to that. One thing that I've kind of heard from multiple department heads that were looking at finding out how we would address it is a couple of our department heads felt like they could be supported more by our town boards, commissions, just in general, with their professional advice that they're providing. So what we're doing is I'm meeting with each department head one-on-one, talking about what, the ones particularly who said it, who said that to me at first, but then all of them in general too, and just seeing, is there a way that we can improve communication across the board? Is there a way that we can get this point across clearer? And things of that nature. That way, we just make sure that our town staff are feeling like they're providing the professional advice and support that they need. And the last two things I will say is, I notified the board in an email, but just so it is on the record, from October 1st through October 4th, I'll be down in Washington DC on behalf of the town. I'll be meeting, I have one-on-one meetings set with the town's congressional delegation, with both of our senators and congressmen. I'll be meeting at the White House on the 4th with the administration's local government liaison and director of intergovernmental affairs regarding some issues that the federal government can help us out here, if possible. And then, on behalf of the town, I'll be laying a wreath in a formal ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery, at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldiers, as a thank you gift from the town. So that will be taking place in the big, first week of October. And then the last thing I'd like to say, particularly with Mr. Steiner here, is our town welcome signs have a big boom today. Mr. Steiner was working on our first sign that we were going to put out to say, "Your business could be here." The Landmark ran an article in the paper about it today. And I received a gentleman in my office who did a full sponsorship for three of the five signs. The, there are two remaining available. And if we exceed that number, Joe and I have also talked about three potential additional locations. So we started with five, just as a, let's start with five, see if it sticks. We may get three, we may get none, but we'll just start with five. And then, there's been a big push for people to donate towards these signs. So we can have anywhere between five and eight. If anyone's interested, please contact my office. 508-886-4100. And we'd be happy to sit and talk about that. You can go on the town's website and the town's Facebook page and actually see the carvings that Mr. Steiner's done. They look great. And they're gonna look even better once they're done. They'll be maroon with 24-carat gold leaf.
23.
23-carat gold leaf.
That extra carat's expensive.
Only 23.
23-carat gold leaf, four by six, four feet by six feet, mounted on reinforced aluminum poles, yes?
No, they'll, they'll be stained, fresh tree.
Stained, stained wood, yeah, that's right.
But the sheathing of aluminum in the concrete.
That's, that's what I was thinking of, I apologize.
Right.
And we're going. I can't thank the people enough who have already reached out. Like I said, we've got three full sponsorships already purchased, but I feel that another four calls this afternoon, once it got out that those three were purchased, so.
I, I got a couple of calls. I couldn't get hold of, they were complaining why they'd get it. I mean, I just heard from you.
Yeah.
And then I got a couple of calls, so.
And like I said, we were in the process of putting one up, just to see if people would bite. And people bit before it was made, so.
People are biting. Now, you have a lot of carving to do.
Yes. No, it's a great problem. It's a great problem. So I was, I was surprised, very surprised.
If the eight get taken up, the money will go towards the carving of the electronic signboard on the top. And me, after that, will have to sit down, Mr. Steiner and I will have to sit down and talk, I guess. But I think that's a great problem to have. It's gonna, it's gonna make the town look really good in the end. I think it's gonna be a nice thing when you're driving in.
You're doing a great job. No taxpayer money has been expended on this, which is pretty awesome.
Correct.
You're, you're doing a good job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you. And that's the end of my report.
And that's the end of your report. Thank you, Mike. Under Old Business, 019, you have a list of the town committees, commissions, boards. We had had some feedback from a couple that they were looking for, a little bit to what Mike was just speaking about, except with the professional employees, looking for either feedback or, well, what does the board sort of want us to do? We should probably make, and it doesn't need to be tonight, but to start thinking about some sort of decision as to whether or not you'd like to invite these committees, commissions to join us one night, or whether we would like to offer to do a joint meeting on their night. Try to get as many people there as we can to have a collaborative discussion about, about process moving forward. We could go in alphabetical order. We can go in any order. Some of certainly these boards and commissions might be well in hand, don't need our help, don't need anything from us. You know, the Finance Committee typically, we're sitting there meeting with them during budget season, pretty regularly anyway. However, it doesn't mean we shouldn't be asking. So if anybody has a process by which they'd like this to move forward, please let Mike know. Or you can bring it up right now. I think the biggest thing would be that whole question of asking them to come here, which means another night for them, versus us going to them, which means another night for us. Either way, you know, everybody's giving of their time in various ways. So maybe whatever their comfort level is, we can do it that way.
Do all of these boards have charges?
They don't. And some need them.
Perhaps the 300th anniversary should be on there too?
Yeah, once seated, it'll be on there.
And Historical Commission, you'll note, it says pending full membership. They're still waiting for one more member to be able to begin meeting.
Correct.
Again. All right.
Is it, sorry, is it possible, Mike, to, I mean, we can go online and find all these, the ones that have charges and find their charges, I assume? But is it possible to compile their charges?
Together?
Yeah.
Sure. I know the ones that don't are Memorial Day, 4th of July, and cable. I can see that there are the ones that have them and the ones that don't.
Growth Management doesn't have a charge.
Growth, correct, yeah.
Do they put online?
Yeah. The charges, yeah. They should be on the website's page for that commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But we'll put, put that in one document and I'll mail that out to you all.
Does anybody want to, you know, take a stab at this and start with the first three that are on the list and just send out an invitation for anything they might want?
Do we want to just, can we just send out an invitation to everybody?
Sure.
Just to make it easier and then familiarize everybody with everything?
Yeah.
You know, I think that might be the best way.
With that offer of, would you like to meet with us? Would you like us to meet with you, joint? Okay, great. Great. I'm, I was not personally including the elected boards in this. Obviously, they are elected. We have had joint meetings in the past, although not often. We can include them. It's possible that all the elected boards would like to get together at some point, which we haven't done in a long time. I can't, anybody remember?
You can invite them.
We can invite them.
I was gonna say, extending, extending an offer out and, you know, just whether it's a, a little bit of a retreat-like where all the elected, elected boards meet together, or more of a small group or something, but.
Yeah, it'd be kind of an interesting meeting. We probably want to come up with a fairly decent agenda, short, but with a couple of goals in mind.
Do we have a designated survivor? In case we're all elected officials in the same building. Voting them out.
Well, I guess maybe, I was thinking just kind of maybe using our, like, town master plan as like a springboard for that, as a, if all of us, as elected boards, are coming together.
That's a good idea.
I don't know.
It's a good idea.
But.
Yeah, I could foster a good discussion.
I like that. Yeah? Nice, big, see what date people come up with, that they're all happy with? That'd be great?
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. 058, the bylaw update.
All bylaws that were voted on at the spring annual town meeting were approved without change to, by the Attorney General's Office. That includes the rate development limitation bylaw, the mandate growth, as it's been called. The bylaw to formalize the bylaw committee. The bylaw that did the technical changes to the zoning bylaw that got rid of the.
District that we weren't using?
Correct. And I believe that was it. All those have been approved without change by the Attorney General's Office, as of Friday.
Okay. Under New Business, we have a petition for a road layout, Edith Lane and Karen Way. That's 060. You have a copy of the list of signatures that came. It's mostly from the residents of those two roadways, lanes and way. And you have the acceptance procedural checklist for the town. Director Buckley, do you have any comments about either of these this evening? You don't need to, I'm just wondering preliminarily, Lee, you did?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
One thing I would like to mention too, if that's okay through the chair, is that those that signed the petition, that's address isn't on either of these streets, many of them are houses that have driveways onto those streets, and their address is on the other side.
Okay. All right. The process for this is that the, the board has been petitioned, and we then vote our intention to lay out the way. At that point, this petition heads over to the planning board and they do their job as far as checking to make sure that it meets all the specs for our roads.
And then the adoption, that you voted on by town.
Oh, it actually comes back to us and we then vote to lay the way, which was our intention tonight, having received the petition. And it then goes to town meeting. So, yeah, in an ideal world, this would make it to the fall. Town meeting? Special town meeting?
And throughout the process in the background, once the intent's voted on tonight, Director Buckley also begins his review of the process as well.
May, I ask, I don't have my phone out. Edith Lane and Karen Way are, they're not new neighborhood roadways, are they? Are they existing?
Yes.
I'm just looking at, because some of these are based off of Charleyan Drive. So I think I know where they are, but I was just trying to visualize. They're kind of up here off Maple and Main and back in there? Is that?
Yes.
All right, any of them are adjacent to Prescott? They're all paved.
Okay. They're adjacent to Prescott.
Thank you.
And very close to Inwood.
Not for Charleyan, that's, that's an older neighborhood, right?
Not as old as Inwood.
Not as old as Inwood.
I believe we have some of the petitioners here as well.
Pretty close. I have to say, yes. Israel.
Our TH has said that we have a couple of petitioners here. Would you like to speak on the issue? Anyone? Okay. All right.
Through the chair, I'm trying to remember, who was the person that first started that subdivision?
Everett Mink?
Pardon?
Really Everett Mink?
No.
No?
Gentleman from Worcester.
Oh, yeah.
And I thought his.
He walked away, didn't he?
His nephew or something like that came before the town and asked for the town to take over the rest of the property. Whatever happened.
Joe has his hand up to, to the chair. I believe it's Israel.
Israel.
Thank you.
Yes.
We pulled the dials in advance of the discussion. Israel Katz.
Okay.
Israel Katz.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's.
What is Israel?
I haven't heard that.
Not Israel. So whatever happened to the prop, the rest of the property? Did the town take it or not?
I, I don't remember taking any official action on the Israel property. We certainly had discussions about it multiple times. So I guess this will.
Has the taxes been paid on it?
Be part of discovery, yeah. I, I think.
Those roads were brought up years ago when I was on the planning board.
Oh, yes.
They were trying to extend the streets.
Yes, they were.
Nothing ever became of it.
No.
I guess-
No one, no one in the neighborhood knew we were living on a private road because we've been receiving town services for so long.
If I may, why were they never, was it, were they never brought before to be accepted as?
That is correct.
That's what he's talking about. The original developer-
Right.
And the residents just didn't feel the need to because they were receiving town services.
They were already receiving it, right.
They just knew it already was.
So it was more of walked away in the middle of the process and...
I think there was, there were a lot of discrepancies in the roadwork.
That is correct, yeah.
So I think that's going to be our concern. We, it's a, it's, you know, six of one half doesn't matter. We really can't lay the way if it's not up to standards. It's the issue we have with a lot of the dirt roads that go down to Cool Sandy and things like that. However, then are putting on residents who've, in some cases, been there a very long time. The onus of possibly funding the improvements to what essentially is still a private road. So we'll hopefully see during this process that the road is, is close to what we need it to be. Roads?
Hopefully, but it barely is. It might be. I remember a long time ago asking what the bond amount was that the town might have been holding on, but it was like five hundred dollars.
It was almost nothing.
Yep.
You were on the planning board? Nice job.
No, it came to us. They wanted, they wanted to extend the street.
Let's not pick any more fights with the planning board.
And we wouldn't allow it. And then it disappeared again.
All right. I would entertain a motion to have the board intend to lay out the way and refer the petition to the planning board regarding Edith Lane and Karen Way.
So that-
Nope.
You said it perfectly.
You have to make-
Through the chair?
Yes.
I'd also add to Director Buckley as well, since he also has to begin the forty-five day review at the same time the planning board's doing it for the same time, so just to formalize it.
Have to add something.
I'll make a motion that the board intend to lay the way for Edith Lane and Karen Way to become town roads and thereby referring the process to the planning board and Director Buckley.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Mike, we will need to hold a-
Public hearing.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we could get a schedule together-
Yeah.
And maybe include everyone in that, planning, us and, and Joe.
Sure.
We'd make sure we get our Ts crossed in time and we can get it onto the warrant without too much.
Absolutely.
Fair. Great, thank you. Oh six one, request to send a representative to the CMMPO selection meeting. If you look at that map, it's a little hard to read, but it's essentially the top middle towns. We are the north central region. Princeton held it for quite some time. Roland had it for a tiny bit. Wes Boylston has had it, Raj for a little bit in his term. His three-year term is about to expire. So this is very similar to the meeting, Wayne, that you went to with the school committee, where all the towns are sending somebody and then choosing among themselves. And that meeting is Thursday at five o'clock, September nineteenth. Is that next week or the week after?
Been canceled.
Okay, so it is not September nineteenth?
It'll be October.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. All right, so date to be determined. The meeting will still happen, I expect, most likely in Wes Boylston, since that's the location of the current rep. Is anybody jumping at the chance to go to this and be the town rep?
Mitch?
I would just as soon go, actually.
You throwing me under the bus, huh?
No, I would, I would actually love to go. Sorry.
All right, go.
Yeah? Somebody, is somebody else volunteering?
If you're volunteering.
I am, I am volunteering for that one.
I would appreciate that.
That one easy, didn't it?
I do that for a living. I don't really-
Raj is the town chair?
No, he is the rep for our, for CMMPO, for North Central.
And who's with Heldon? I believe.
Well, so they, they were trying to hold it clearly in Wes Boylston, so it was supposed to be at the Beeman Library. But if they're moving it, I'm sure.
Probably. Gotta keep it at Wes Boylston at the moment, but they were not involved.
Could I get a motion to send somebody? This isn't a sort of an official thing?
Motion to send a representative to the CMMPO meeting.
Thank you.
Second?
Meaning me, just anybody? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I will abstain. All right. Water rate memo, oh six two. This was an article?
Yeah, Director Buckley provided my office and all of you with a copy of this article from MSN News entitled, "Water Costs Are Rising Across the U.S. And Here's Why."
I'll note this is an ad for Progressive Insurance on the cover page. Right to the source here. Appreciate it.
Having said that, like every, a lot of people today, I simply get up and looked at the headlines, and that was the headline. So, and it's near and dear to a lot of people in town's heart, so I made a copy of the article and sent it out to you folks. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh six three, parliamentary procedure and meeting process. I added this just as a very high-level commentary. Obviously, we want to keep these meetings going as productively as we can. And I did want to get the board's input on how far, if any, it would like to go in tightening down on some of our procedures. You have in your folders a list of a simplified chart. It's based on Robert's rules. It actually comes from the Mass Association of School Committees. I bring that up because obviously, whatever you go to a Wachusett school committee meeting, it's a very large group. They do follow much stricter rules. We have always tended to have a far more open conversation, including with the people who are in attendance. We are still a small town. I'm not really looking to change that much of anything. I just want to ensure that everybody feels like they are able to speak, are able to speak in full, and then to move on and be recognized by the chair, so that we can keep that in, in some semblance of order and people are able to speak sort of in the order that we, that we can see them out there. Because sometimes there's multiple people who wish to speak and we have to make some decisions about who gets to go first. We do know of some communities that have instituted time restrictions on when visitors to the meetings, attendees can speak. I, I, it would significantly change the way we do things. But you've got some things in front of you. You can take a look. We certainly have taken the initiative in the past to set some rules of decorum and, and some public hearing rules when we knew something contentious was coming up. Sometimes contentious things come up. I, I, again, wasn't looking to do anything other than just sort of ensure that we're all on the same page relative to keeping everything civil, keeping the discourse on track, keeping everything procedurally moving forward and that, to ensure that we're talking about the meat of what's on the agenda. But as I say, if somebody's looking to take it a little further, I would suggest maybe taking a look at some of these options. Mike even provided the Gardner City Council rules. Again, these larger boards, committees, commissions, the city council operate very differently than we have up till now. I'm not, I'm not super interested in changing that back and forth as unofficial as it may be at times and as we saw tonight. You know, we saw some back and forth where people weren't necessarily, necessarily recognized by the chair. But really clamping down on that open discourse, I don't know if it's gonna do us any favors.
And just as a quick clarification to the photocopy of the cards that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, up until May, when the board reorganized, those had been in the binders. Then when the board asked Laura and I to just clean out the binders, we took them out.
Oh, sorry.
So they were-
They had been in my-
They had been in there. So we copied them and we'll be back. And then the other examples, those were just quick things that I found online. I knew where to find Gardeners and I knew that Wachusett happened. So those, there's other examples that are out there. Those were just the quickest ones I could think of to print when I was asked.
So through the chair, can I ask, I mean, do you feel like there has not been, are we having a problem with civil discourse? We had, we do have, what's included, we have adopted open meeting rules of decorum-
Yep.
And public hearing rules, which gives the, the chair and the board the power to eject folks that are not behaving in a respectful manner. Gives folks the ability to restrict time, I think, in public speaking, calls for orderly civic discussion. I'm wondering, you know, my only concern is that when you say move forward or further than what we already have. You talk about the school committee in particular. They have a bylaw in place in which the chair appoints every single individual subcommittee member on their own, based on his or her discretion, without any sort of democratic discourse, and has the ability to limit discourse that the board has by each individual elected official. Will only get to speak twice. Would have to ask permission from the chair to do that.
Yeah.
Now, I'm a little concerned about that and moving in that direction, because you have been chair several times now at this point. And this has never been broached before, and it seems to me like the public perception would be that because there has been, there have been items that have come up in which, you know, certain individuals have expressed disagreement with you, that you're trying to remove the democratic process through this. And I think that it sets a really scary precedent for future chairs if they have the ability to unanimously appoint committee and subcommittee members without any sort of discourse from the board's perspective.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, where did you get that?
Interrupting is against the rules on the Wachusett school committee bylaws, so I'm gonna go by that based on now. But that's right here in the school committee bylaws that you have provided. But you're providing that as an example or precedent to where we can move, and that's a little bit terrifying to me as an elected official.
So hopefully you heard, and I can repeat myself, how I preface this, which is, I'm not super interested in making changes.
Then why was this put on the agenda at your request?
So, I'm kind of interested that you asked that question, but I actually have had some comments from residents who are watching. And I take some responsibility in that, because to your point, I think, I agree with you. I actually think the rules of decorum cover what this board has historically needed to cover. Even when the board went from three to five, it didn't make any significant changes in the way discussion was happening, despite the fact that there were now three, two extra people, you know, right? So three had been there and now there's two more. And there was a lot of talk going on. Sometimes our meetings are going a little bit long, you know, we're about to hit eight thirty. So I actually think these rules of decorum hit the major points that we need. I brought these up again to see if this board wanted to set anything else. I am actually very comfortable, for the most part, with the way these meetings have always progressed. Again, our board meetings have been very open relative to other communities. And I brought up school committees specifically because you were looking at the chart of parliamentary motions, again, from Massey.
That's Robert's rules.
It is based on Robert's rules. It is based on Robert's rules. We, we do know that the school committee has its own bylaws, which we have a very basic bylaw. Doesn't really apply. The point there was simply how they run their meetings. Now, it is based on bylaw. I don't see us ever going down that road. But you can make a point from some of the other communities that have been limiting discourse. I don't think it's where we should go. I did want to present it to the board in case there were other people who felt that there was some concern about how the meetings were progressing. Again, in the interests of ensuring that we are serving the residents as best we can and being productive in our meetings. Again, if everybody's comfortable, I've been comfortable. And if anybody has suggestions, that would be great. If we think the rules of decorum should mostly be enough, I'm, I'm actually really good with that. I think actually the town of Princeton, for example, has put a time limit on when residents speak. Maybe it's working for them. You know, every town is a little bit different. I, I would just as soon not do that. Not do that to residents who take the time out of their night to attend to the board, who's put a lot of time and effort into, into, you know, sitting in these seats. So, yeah, that was-
No, I understand. I'm just a little concerned why the, the school committee bylaws are included with that language in them.
Yeah, it was, I think you-
I just don't know why this is an agenda item.
I just said why it was an agenda. I'm not sure what the question is.
No, but you, you did not really say it was an agenda, because you just said you were comfortable with everything we're already doing. If you were comfortable with everything we're already doing, it wouldn't be an agenda item, right? I think we have rules of decorum in place, and I think for the most part, they do enough. I mean, obviously, if people heckle, if they boo, I mean, we're elected officials. We're gonna get some of that, right? I think that that's fine. If it goes too far, we have the ability to, to take measures to do that. I mean, when you're talking about limiting our ability as elected officials to speak-
Nope, not at all.
That's what's in these documents you provided with the agenda item. I mean, why would you include this if that weren't the case? I mean, you could have just included Robert's rules.
I actually, I didn't personally throw the Wachusett Regional School District Committee bylaws in here. I did want to reference the Wachusett School Committee as a meeting that runs very differently from ours, partly because of their size. Partly because, as you noted, they have subcommittees that they can refer to. There are things within-
But North Korea runs differently than us, so we don't include it on the agenda. Like, I just don't understand why it was put there.
So it's a school committee on the way to North Korea?
No, I'm, I'm just following your logic here, which to me is-
Really?
If you're trying to impose stricter rules on what we're doing as a meeting.
I'm trying to respond to some concerns I heard, and I'm trying to include the board in finding out whether or not, it sounds like, I think very clearly, you're okay with how the board meetings have been going. I do want to make sure, again, we can maintain some civility and that, you know, to your point about people finishing their sentences and that residents having time to really get their cohesive thoughts out. Some of them, you know, for a lot of people, it's their first time coming to these meetings. They don't necessarily always know the process and it can be a little frightening at times to, to people who are new to it. You know, they're not all Dick who's very comfortable with us. Yeah, I'm fine with it, you know. And when we talk about Robert's rules, parliamentary motions, one thing Mike and I talked about briefly was there are some boards who have sort of officially adopted Robert's rules. We have never done that as a board in, in our history that I know of. And I only go back, you know, the thirteen years. We never did it. In adopting Robert's rules, we would probably be limiting ourselves just in that action relative to the amount of open discourse that we've been able to have over the years. So is it something we could talk about and take a look at? Yeah. But it would mean, you know, to your point, if we're having a discussion about something that's difficult, that's contentious a little bit, that the discourse would be a bit more limited. Or we'd come into a meeting and say, well, we're gonna make a motion to suspend the rules at this meeting. And that means everybody watching would immediately be suspicious. But what do you mean? Why do you need to suspend the rules? I don't know that any of that would work for us right now. I'm, I'm hoping we can just move forward with the way we've been going, where the discourse remains civil and where we're making some progress. That's why I brought it up. It was brought up to me.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion then to reaffirm the rules we've already adopted as a board and to enforce those according to what's already on the books.
Excellent. Anyone else? Is there a second?
A second?
Okay. Does anybody have any comments?
I mean, excluding zero six three three.
Zero six three three. No, the rules that we as a board have already codified, which is open meeting rules of decorum.
Zero, uh, zero six three dash one and zero six three dash two. So our open meeting rules of decorum-
Yep.
And our public hearing rules.
Both set in the summer of twenty eighteen. Everybody good?
I'm fine with it.
Nothing to add? Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on. Mike, have I, have we turned the corner? No. Correspondence. We have a, so the letter that you have from Mr. Sherman in your correspondence folder is actually a reiteration of the concern he had when he was able to attend our last meeting regarding, again, the accident at the intersection of sixty-eight and Wachusett Street. We just wanted to make sure everybody had that officially, that we've received his correspondence. I don't want to put you on the spot, Joe. Is there anything you'd like to add tonight relative to the intersection?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Thank you. Does the board have anything it would like to add to the record regarding the intersection?
You've been meeting with the chiefs in discussions about it, correct? I need to know.
And I think, if I may, at our last meeting, Chief Monaco had proposed putting speed limit signs on Wachusett, which I think the board passed based upon Director Buckley's evaluation. So the board, I think, is still working with Director Buckley and the chiefs to, to take all the information in.
The signs were, were there for already existing speed limits. They weren't on, they weren't on a change or-
Correct, but there, there's no posted speed limits on Wachusett Street, the whole length, so those were, my understanding was that those were-
Speed limits by statute. We're just posting it so everybody knows.
Correct.
I, I hate to say it, Joe, I literally, I watched somebody last week. I was coming down Wachusett Street, heading towards Rutland. I stopped behind another person who was stopped. That person then chose to proactively go out into traffic, take a left. I cannot believe the truck missed him. The truck was right there. I saw it and I was behind the guy. I, I just don't even-
I had somebody coast through the stop sign and turn left in front of me. I mean, they clearly saw that there was nothing coming closest to their direction, and whether they saw me or not, I, I don't know. But it was a rolling stop through the, through the stop sign, so.
It's a tough intersection.
It really is, yeah.
I've witnessed an accident there, so.
Yeah, I feel like we've all had.
What's before the board on this?
Oh, this was just notification that we received this official correspondence and that it's related to Mr. Sherman's official or his public comments at our last meeting. I think it's most likely an issue we're gonna continue talking about.
Is someone gonna respond to him?
Yeah. Yeah. We've also received correspondence, my office has also received correspondence from Senator Gobean, Representative Ferguson about the intersection as well.
Thank you. Joe, did you have something to add?
So regarding any accidents, obviously, we can't talk about it in public setting, so that's off the table. We did prepare a budget for the signs that were requested, and we're gonna see what we can and cannot afford, and I'll forward that information onto the board. We established the budget like a week ago. Having, the third thing is, we have been in contact with Mass Department, or Mass Department of Transportation, and we've asked a couple of times to have the intersection reviewed by them for safety purposes. They have yet to get back to us, but we put the request up. They have yet to get back to us, but we put the request up. We'll give them a friendlier mind. All right?
Thank you.
In terms of the, the speeding, or the speed limit signs on the road, and you said you had put together a proposal, how many we can afford, what the, the budget would be for that? Do we have the capability of doing, if we want to do more sponsored signs of please drive slow or intersection ahead? I mean, it sounds like we've gotten a really good response out of the welcome to Rutland signs. Maybe somebody might be willing to put something up to where we can at least put a couple of warning advisories or something on that road, is that?
I think, I mean, hearing from Chief Monaco.
I see that, is that a problem or?
No, semantically, yes. The gift account that was created by the town was for town purchased signs. So, since the welcome signs were purchased by the town, that's what, but.
If those last fill up, do we, could we have?
The charter for the, or the charge for the gift account was for the purchase of town signs.
I think also hearing from Chief Monaco, it's a balance of not making it over signage crowded. And there are dangerous intersection signs there already that are new as of the past couple of years. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think it can definitely continue to be explored, but I think it's a fine balance of over signage and making it too confusing versus.
Dick.
Through the chair, I wish I could know because at the flea market, uh, there were so many signs laying on the ground. High one ninety and I told my wife, I ought to buy that and put it down on sixty-eight. This is how you get the high one ninety.
I think that would get us into Yankee Magazine or something, if we started using antique signs.
But I'll look for forty mile an hour signs at the next flea market.
You start scavenging and it'd be, yeah.
One thing, if I may, one thing I wondered is getting the flashing, the solar powered flashing stop signs for the Wachu, you know, for the Wachusett, because that's only.
Like sixty-two has.
Right, that are the solar powered ones that flash stop.
They're fairly expensive.
Well, if Mitch can get some donation.
You need somebody who will.
Sponsored by.
No, you never know. I mean, people care about the issue.
Right.
It's something where if the town has to wait to spend money on it, you might have a business in town that, somebody that cares about it and that lives on the street.
Yeah.
That might want to help us out. You never know.
Sheila, I just, I just say that legally for, in an enforcement, uh, standard, if the police were to enforce a sign, it has to be a DPW issued, uh, sign. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, they could donate.
Like the one ways at McDonald's.
Yes.
Or, you know, the stop at Dunkin' Donuts, that's not a citation. So, if there was an accident, something like that, civil at fault type of thing. It has to say DPW on the back.
Gotcha.
Got it.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
Motion to, uh.
Give me one second. You, you got through Mike off quick and I had one thing to bring up. Mike, you're, you're going to Washington with Congressman McGovern?
Yeah.
You'll be seeing him?
Yep, and Senators Warren and Martin.
Please thank Mr. McGovern because Overlook Farm got their five oh one C three and so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good.
Moving on. Thank you.
Getting there. Uh, Mike, we don't have an executive session, right?
No.
Was this just added as a justice case? Thank you.
It's the placeholder on the agenda.
Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second call in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah.